One specific thing on public participation in regards to an event that the Madawaska Water District went through on August 20th. We had a major water line that burst and we had a section of our town that did not have water for a period of time. To our rescue came the fire department and they were very helpful. They stayed there all day until it was time to release them. And I want to personally let you guys know how appreciative the Water District is of that joint community effort that was shown by them. Also Jim Soucy, the Fire Chief, was remarkable. All day, I don't know if he was supposed to work that day or not, but he was there. We really appreciate that. I also want to thank Kevin Doobie for the moral support that he was around. You know, do you need anything, I'm there for you guys if you need something. And I also want to thank Mark Mador at the sewage plant, the same thing. If you need anything, you know where we are. So I want you as board members to know how appreciative the Madawaska Water District was. And I want to thank them, some of the better, you know, our community has some of the better employees all over the valley and we appreciate them and we're very fortunate to have them. That's what I want to say on the public participation.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you very much, Don. It's always, always nice to recognize some of the hard work that some of our townspeople are doing. Anybody else? Yep, go ahead. Dan, go ahead.
At the last meeting of the Board of Selectmen, I had requested that two different subjects would be placed on the next agenda for the town's selectmen meetings. I'd just like to ask Gary if there's a valid reason why they don't appear on the agenda for tonight?
The only reason why is because we have a lot of business to consider that's pressing and I work with the Board Chair to set the agenda. So I put together the articles and I asked the Board Chair and the Vice Chair, we go over this to make sure that these articles are good for the agenda and what particular order. I don't personally set the agenda alone. I bring, I bring about the business that I know is before us. We have seventeen articles of business and all are important. We have much more to talk about. There's no other reason than that.
Will these two issues be brought up? Will they be placed on the agenda for the next Board of Selectmen meeting?
So can you please remind me of what the matters are that you want on the agenda? Because it's the Board Chairman that sit, that works on the agenda.
I had specifically asked you to write them down so that they wouldn't be forgotten. And I'm just wondering if they are going to appear on an agenda at some point in time?
I will work with the Board.
Well, now that we're recording it, I mean, as far as an open meeting.
I mean, if, if the article is one for discussion for a time clock, then that's, that's one that will come up in discussions with the Chair and the Vice Chair. And then the other one was for the discussion on hiring employees? If that was what you're talking about?
The second one was, I'm of the opinion that the Board of Selectmen should have some input and recommendations when it comes to the hiring or firing of any town employee. We can leave the ultimate decision in the hands of the Town Manager, as it has been, but I believe that the Board of Selectmen should have some input prior to either one of these taking place.
Any comments here from the Board? Anybody else have any?
I just, I think, and I was there when you asked and honestly, like, I, I totally forgot about it. There's an issue with, I always want to call it Deon Road, the snowmobile trail and there were a number of articles on this agenda that got pushed to the next time. So I guess, I mean, I'm not, well, I guess I am kind of jumping to Gary's defense because I think part of the issue which we also discussed is we, for a little bit till we get caught up, we want to have meetings more often. So maybe when we set our next meeting, we could keep that in mind and not go till next month and put on the agenda that, you want to get that, Doug, please? Answer it. Maybe we could have the agenda items that we've been trailing behind, that we, we need to catch up and do it like as early as next week or something. I don't, you know, I don't know, Doug, if you think that's a...
Well, I mean, you know...
It's certainly hard to cram everything into one night.
You know, when it comes to time clocks, I mean, I'm not sure that we're really facing a problem there where we have issues. I mean, I understand that it's a great way of controlling who's in and out and at what time, but, but unless I'm hearing some real, real problems, I'm not sure that I'm ready to agree with going with the time clock. Hiring and firing people, well, I mean, you know, I mean, I don't know how you feel that you want to be involved in that, in that scenario, but, but...
I believe that the Selectmen should get to review any and all applicants for a job that's going to be for the town. At times, there are personality conflicts that could interfere with certain candidates for certain jobs and that I'm afraid that we bypass candidates for certain jobs that would be perhaps more qualified. And I think that the Board, I think it's the Board's responsibility to review these with the Town Manager. And I believe that the Board should have some input and when it comes to firing as If there are personality conflicts ever, which it, which does happen in the real world, I think that the Board of Selectmen should be briefed on what's taking place and that they should have their input and that they should have their recommendations to the Town Manager. Coming back to the time clock, the latest discharge of an employee, a time clock in the Town Office...
Listen, I'm going to, I'm going to stop you there.
Hold on here. This, this is executive session conversation, number one.
Not a time clock.
And number two, this is, this is public participation. So if we want to put something on the agenda, request it's on the agenda and let's handle this the way we're supposed to handle it. If you're going to start talking about a discharged employee and a time clock and issues that you think, I personally, I mean, we, we all looked at everything. There's not one thing that Gary did that even looks like it could be...
That's not what I'm saying.
That he had a personality issue. It's what you're implying and it's what it makes it look like you're, you're referring to, Dan. So first off, this is an executive session discussion and second of all, it's public participation. Let's put it on an agenda and handle it the way we should.
Okay, well, I, I asked the Town Manager to put it in writing to have that appear on this meeting's agenda and it hasn't. My point is, most places of employment have a punch clock for the employees. That's all I'm saying. And it can alleviate a lot of issues, a lot of problems when it comes to tidiness on a regular basis. That's all I'm saying. And I'm not targeting any individual incident, I'm just saying that a punch clock should be a necessary plate, thing at a place of employment.
Any other comments?
I've got a couple concerns in town with sidewalks or cross, should I say crosswalks?
All right, before you get into that, as far as the discussions that we were having here, I mean, are we all done with that? We're all set with that? Okay. Okay, Gary, go ahead.
Okay, number one, the crosswalk that they put in front of Shop &amp; Save, they put that in nowhere, no man's land. They put it, they put the crosswalk going into the medium of the Shop &amp; Save parking lot instead to one end and the other. So I live right around the street and I see several, several people a day go to Shop &amp; Save, they never walk to that crosswalk, they walk to the corner of the Bullies driveway and they walk to where the, the recycling center is. And years ago, the crosswalk was there. Now, for some reason, it's been moved and nobody's using it. And I will not go down the street to use a crosswalk to come back to my house. And I'm not only talking for myself, I'm talking for the people that live on 25th Avenue, that live in the apartments, that come down to go shopping on foot every day. Number one. Number two, there should be a crosswalk in front of D&amp;M Plaza, which is Napa Subway and Ezzy Insurance. Because there's again, there's several people that take the sidewalk from the Taste Freeze down the road, come to my, in front of my place of employment or my place of business and they cut across the street there and that's a blind street. Mr. Don knows that now. That's a, that's a blind area for people when they cross the street there, they can, they're liable to get hit. And then there's a third crosswalk, I'm trying to think where it is, I can't, I can't put my, my finger on that one. Anyway, those two crosswalks should be addressed. And then the other thing is our infamous little pocket park on 11th Avenue. I think we had meetings back in February, January, February, talking about how to park vehicles in that parking area. Well, today I pass by and I see arrows going into that park and the arrow says, in the, on the upper end of 11th Avenue and out by your building. Well, if we follow those arrows, the parking spaces that is put in the middle there, nobody can park there because they're opposite of what they're supposed to be. Either there shouldn't, and first of all, there shouldn't have been put any there because I myself, three, four times, tried to park my vehicle in any of those parking slots except for the one at the end, that I can't go in there straight and park into that parking area. So that's a concern I have for safety reasons on that park.
I've noticed, I've noticed those lines.
Number two, is there was supposed to be ample lighting put into that park so that the parking area would be well lit. There's a, there's a light on the street and there's your little string lights, but there's no lights whatsoever in that parking lot and in the far corner, it's dark and black and ready for people to do whatever they want to do in that corner. So that should be addressed. I think that's all that happened in this. Thank you.
Gary, I mean, the question of the lighting in the back of that pocket park?
So the lighting is not something that was in the bid contract, it's something that we'll have to decide as a Board to put in and, and fund, put in that, that street light. So it's not that we, it's not that we decided we weren't going to do it, it's just that it wasn't something that was in the contract to be done.
Okay, you know, the, the lines is, as Gary is indicating right now as far as the parking, if you do follow the arrows in and out of that parking area, the center parking lines there are in the wrong direction. I don't know if you took a look at that or if you've ever noticed it, but anyway, if you, if you take a look at it, I think we could, we could address that at some point. But, but anyway, I mean, they're, they're kind of, they're kind of directed so that you would have to come in from the other side, the other entrance, which is the exit, to be able to park in those, in those parking spots. So those lines too should be addressed. We're still under public participation, was there anybody else? Paul?
I have a couple.
Nope.
This one, Dave, come on. Right? Okay, good. The only thing I have is just, when I come to the gym, I notice there's a few cracks a little bit on the front, right in front of where it says Community Center there. It said that section there that needs to be tarred, so that's why I'm bringing that up tonight, just to let you guys know. Because that, it's got a few broken tars that needs to be, just that section to be tarred. So that's why I use that other wing to get in. That's it.
Very good. Well noted. Yes, Mr. Talbot?
I'd like to ask the Chairman of the Board a few questions concerning ATV things. I'd like to get a feeling of how you feel about this. Why do you think Governor Mills never requested due legal process from the Town of Madawaska to post ATV signs? She never applied. You've heard of the ATV, of the Governor's ATV program, I imagine, right? On the radio or TV or something?
Yeah, but you're dealing with a public, public road here at this point.
A big pardon?
You're dealing with a public road?
Yes, I'm only concerned about...
So why are you questioning this more about a public road? We don't have, we don't have control over this public road.
You don't have control over the public roads?
Well, as far as I'm aware, we don't.
State road.
It's a state road.
I'm talking about town roads.
Well, town roads, this is, what area, the road that you're talking about? Is this, is this Gary Dooford?
Which road are you talking about?
His road, is that a...
Were you referring to Talbot Road?
I'm talking about all Madawaska public roads.
Okay.
You are an official of the town, right?
Yes, and so I, I guess I'm trying to answer you.
You're telling me something that, you're saying that belongs to the state?
I'm saying the state controls that road. That particular road that you are talking about.
I had a conversation with people on the Department of Transportation and they said it was not their jurisdiction, it was the jurisdiction of the Town of Madawaska.
Is there somebody here that could answer this gentleman?
Yes, please.
What's the question? No, I mean, Mr. Chairman, you know, if he's got a question...
Let's, can you refer, can you repeat the question? He wants to hear the question.
Why do you think Governor Mills never requested due legal process from the Town of Madawaska to post ATV signs? Because that's what she should have done.
And who made that request? You're saying that it's...
No, he's asking why the Governor didn't request it of us and I don't even know how you would want us to answer or want Doug to answer what the Governor is thinking about anything. I mean, I...
The towns?
I'm asking, I'm asking the Chairman of the Board what his opinion is of this.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
The towns' boards are, have jurisdiction...
Could you speak a little louder please?
The towns' boards, excuse me, the towns' boards have jurisdiction over town roads. The town roads, the Board does not have jurisdiction to set speed limits. The towns' council...
I'm not talking about speed limits there, I'm talking about posting signs.
The towns' board has authority to designate trail access on town roads. They do not have authority to change speed limits, even for ATVs.
Excuse me, are you saying the town does not have authority to demand due legal process from somebody that requests to put up signs on the public roads?
Mr. Talbot, I don't understand your question. You obviously have an angle, can you please elaborate on...
Okay, I'll have to come here with some legal papers and show you.
Bring the legal papers. But, Mr. Talbot, you're, you're trying to rehash a decision made by previous boards time and time again.
I don't care about previous boards, I'm talking about the present right now. People are going by my house with unregistered motor vehicles. People are going by my house, they're speeding as fast as they can. Okay, I, you don't want to answer that question then? Is that it? You...
I think we just gave you the answer.
Okay. Why, why, why is she relying on individuals, phantom individuals to post them at night when, when, when we're sleeping?
You're asking me to answer for Governor Mills and I don't understand why you're even putting that question to us.
I'd like to make you aware that this is happening here. Okay. Do you intend to follow the same policy of tacit approval as your two predecessors, Madame Dupere and Don Ochasi?
Which is?
Tacit approval. You know what's going on and you won't do a thing about it. You know it's wrong to post signs on public roads, on Madawaska public roads without do, whatever, do...
Mr. Talbot, the town did not post signs on those roads.
I, I know the town is not posting signs on the road. I'm not talking about the town, town posting signs. I'm talking about requesting to post the signs. It's against the law to post a sign or take down a sign on a public road. You agree with that?
I would have to look at the statute.
You don't know about it?
You know, Mr. Talbot...
I, I find it hard to believe that you don't know things like that and you're Town Manager.
Mr. Talbot, are you, what you're trying to do is find, get questions for people here who might have answers to your question.
All right, go on to the fourth, excuse me.
Mr. Chair, I request...
Who do you think, what's this?
Mr. Talbot, you know, really, we each, we all have about two minutes to deal with, with these issues and at this point, you've taken ten minutes. So if there's something really pointed that you want to address me...
Will you please let me finish?
At this point, you've already gone over your time.
Why do you think the state of Maine does not allow ATVs on roads that the state has jurisdiction over? Is, is, that's the answer I'm getting?
Yes.
Okay. I have one more question here.
Mr. Talbot, your time is up.
Do you believe the people of Madawaska should have the right to vote on this issue?
Mr. Talbot.
Thank you.
Okay. What's the story? Do I get an answer tonight or I don't? What I can, two months ago, you guys looked into it? For jake break signs to get put up at the lake or you don't have an ordinance in Madawaska? That's what I want to know and that's what I came last month for. Now I'm back here for it.
We do not have a jake break ordinance townwide.
Okay, when you're going to make one?
If you have a request, you can make that request to the Board, you can make the request to the Planning Board, you can make a request by petition if you want, that the town adopt jake break ordinances for specific areas. But we do not currently have a jake break ordinance in this town.
I'd like to have one made. Where do I go if you guys don't want to do it?
This would be a Planning Board, this would be a Planning Board issue. You would bring this to the Planning Board.
Okay, when you guys have a meeting on the Planning Board?
Well, you'd have to check with the Planning Board. I don't have that, I don't have their agenda handy, but I'm sure somebody could, could research that and I'm sure they...
I think, I think the Town Manager should get back to Mr. Dooford and let him know.
I think I researched it. I was here last month for the same question and nothing was researched.
So, so, so we have a member here of the Planning Board, he's here, so maybe we could have Gary say a few words.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address that. You know, Alan, he's right, came here over two months ago requesting information about jake breaks and, and to put that story to a caress, last year, somebody turned around and put no jake break signs on Bullier Road and they were there. I saw them, he asked, he requested them, they were put up and all of a sudden, they all disappeared. Somebody took them away. But there's also, he did, he requested that information from the Chair, from the Board here, but the Board never brought the information or sent the information to the Planning Board for the Planning Board to deal with. And Mr. Dooford is not the only one that has a problem with jake breaks. We have jake breaks all over this town. We have a problem with jake breaks all over this town. I stopped it on West Main Street two years ago because I called the company that had nice big letters on their trucks and I told them that the next jake break that was going to happen in front of my shop, in front of my house while I'm sleeping, that I was going to call up the, the state police and I was going to have the stick and scales set there and have every truck weighed when they went by. The jake breaks stopped the next morning.
Did you ever address this in a, with the state at all? Was this ever brought up? Have you ever discussed this with the state, why some of these signs were or were not put up?
There, there's a state law that there's not supposed to be any excessive laws.
But I'm talking about this, I'm talking about the signs themselves.
But the signs themselves, no. I didn't have, I just called up the company and I told them, look, this is what we're requesting.
Mr. Dooford, you know Mr. Dooford?
I'll answer that question. I went to DUT in Prescott, okay? I told them about the jake break signs, they said that we don't have nothing to do with that. And now I'm trying to find out if there's an ordinance in Madawaska.
There isn't one.
Okay. What you got to do to find one, to get one done?
Mr. Dooford, do you think you can help? Mr. Dooford?
Well, submit a request to the Planning Board and we'll get it addressed.
Okay, that's what it is.
I'm speaking on behalf of the Chairman now, not the Chairman.
I, I think that that's the right way to go.
Yep.
So I'm agreeing with you. I'm fine.
And I spent two months. I called Gary, I don't know how many times, never had my phone call returned. I don't know how hard it is.
Okay. Do we have any other issues? All right, let's move on to Article Three, which we're going to move Article Twelve up to Article Three or in the next article. Article Twelve, to consider a request by the Madawaska Water District for a water line easement on town-owned property on Tax Map One, Book Four Twenty-Eight, Page Two Eighteen, request to be placed on the town meeting warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. I am the Superintendent of the Madawaska Water District. I also have a Board Member of the District here tonight, but at this point, I'm going to let the newly-appointed Superintendent of the Water District, effective January First Two Thousand Twenty, Twenty One, answer those questions.
Okay. He didn't know that.
Put me on the spot here. I believe we're here to ask the Town Board to start the process, to grant us an easement on Garamanzo Avenue, which is off Main Street. I believe the process is that the Board of Selectmen votes to move this forward and then it goes to...
That's not with that, sorry.
...town meeting.
Sorry, I, I distributed some papers that go with another article, it's not with this one here. You already have the map.
Yeah, I have it, I'm...
Yeah. Sorry, Mr. Bisholz.
Twelve. So, so Steve is actually asking the question, Gary, if you want to try to help answer him?
Yeah, so this request, you know, Don had started talking about this a while back and they weren't sure if they were going to be doing that, if they were going to put a new water line up there. It was something that they were contemplating with their engineers. I followed up with Don earlier this year to say, look, we're going to go to town meeting. I did find out that, you know, under utility law, if there's a declared public way already, that the Town's Board has the authority under the water utility laws to grant an easement. But in this case, with that parcel of land over there, which is next to Central Building Supply, it's off of Riverview, it's like a T, it's not a declared public way. And so the Board doesn't under, does not have the authority to grant such an easement. So, but you would have the authority to put it before the town's voters and that's what they're asking for. And so I've already, I already have language that I started working on for the town warrant. Once we get to working on the town meeting warrant at a next Board meeting or two, we'll have that language in there if the Board so chooses to put it on the warrant.
So at this point, I mean, is there any other issues that you're, we need to be concerned about?
No, I believe now that, I understand how the process works, it's going to be included on the town warrant at the next town meeting.
Yes.
Fine.
Yep. I mean, if your request were to come in at a different time, that it wouldn't coincide with the town meeting, we could have, we could have done a special town meeting for this, but we do have to go to the legislative body, which is the townspeople, to get the approval, so timing is, is right.
Town meeting sounds fine.
Is the entire, is the entire job on, on town property?
No. Only the part of the job that would be on town property on that, on that non-declared town road, or however you reference to it, is to bring the pipe from Main Street up to Riverview Street, crossways on Riverview Street, and then onto a piece of property that the Water District owns that we bought from Mr. Louis DeJardine.
What I'm getting at, you're not going across any privately owned properties? Landowner properties, house properties?
No.
It's all streets and... Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
I assume that we need a motion here to bring this to work for the town meeting?
Yeah, I would say that you're going to need a... Maybe a motion to request that we put it on the warrant, on the draft warrant for review at our next... Probably our next board meeting, or...
So could I have a motion to include...
I make a motion to include this request for the town meeting.
Second? Favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We're into Article... Actually, Article Three, now, to consider other business and adjustments to the agenda. Can we take it up there?
Yeah, so I did add one item of other business. I have put that in front of you. We received a thirty-day notification from the town of Senegat to withdraw from the code enforcement in a local agreement. We provided interlocal code enforcement services to Senegat for a few years now. And so, right now, we're without code enforcement. There's been some concerns there with that. And the... As part of our interlocal agreement, if either party wants to pull out of it, you can do so with thirty days' notice. And so their email attached to this provides that notice. I did touch base with Senegat. Most of our code enforcement services are seasonal there, so generally speaking, May through October is the permitting season, so we've already... We've already provided most of the services per that agreement. So I let them know that we're going to look to prorate that... The billing for those services, so that they don't have to pay for the... What's left, you know? So I would like to expand on that a little bit. We do also provide CEO services to the town of Eagle Lake. Right now, with the vacancy, I have been able to find a CEO from Fort Kent to fill in in Eagle Lake for us, for the time being, in the short term, until we figure out what we're going to do next. I am considering asking this board to probably exercise the thirty-day option to terminate that agreement. I think that we're likely not going to be able to have... Find a licensed CEO. The law allows for a new individual to get trained within a year. And I think in that period of time, it would probably be prudent for us to regroup, take care of what we have here, and get the new CEOs feed underneath that person. And then maybe if we want to revisit this in the future. But I think right now, we're a little bit hard-pressed to provide services that far out. So I think... I don't know that you necessarily need a motion here to ratify the Senegat's withdrawal, but I would certainly welcome your thoughts on Eagle Lake as to whether or not we would consider, you know, terminating that agreement. And the same applies there. We've provided most of the services in that permitting season to them. In winter time, it does drop off. There's not as much activity. So with that, any questions?
Anybody have any... I mean, I'm assuming that we're also losing revenue there.
There's about eight thousand dollars of associated revenue between the two communities. Like I said, we've already... We're going to realize that revenue, most of it, this year, because we've provided most of that service this year. So I don't... Yeah, we are probably going to lose a little bit of revenue from what we have in our budget, proposed budget, but I think it's negligible... A negligible amount of money to be concerned about.
Very good. Anybody have any... Any thoughts there?
I don't know if there's anything to discuss. I mean, if we have an agreement with them to provide a service and we can't provide it, then it's just a given that, I mean, we have to let them know and withdraw from it, so...
But as an agreement that was executed by this board, authorized by this board, I would also need this board to decide whether or not you want to...
I would make the motion to withdraw from that agreement as per whatever, you know, the agreement says, thirty-day notice, or...
Do we have a second there? A second need? Yep. All in favor? Move.
That's all I have for other business.
Article Four. Consider Board of Selectmen meeting minutes of July twenty-eighth, August four, August seventeen, August twenty-seven, and the joint meeting minutes of the Board of Finance Committee of August eleven, August twelve, August nineteen, and September two.
I make a motion to accept all those minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Article Five. Consider the treasurer's warrants. Motion.
I make a motion to accept the treasurer's warrants.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
I would remind you, before you leave the meeting tonight, Carol's got a box full for you guys to sign off. Some of you have already signed. Most of them, and we're just missing a few signatures on others.
Article Six. To consider a request by Samantha Thomas, Girl Scout, Troop One Sixty-One member, to install a Silver Award food cupboard on town property.
Hi, Sam.
Don't be nervous. We're all... This is good business for this board. We welcome you, and we want you to be comfortable in making your request.
Good evening. My name is Samantha. Good evening. My name is Samantha Thomas, and I am a third-year Girl Scout with the Madawaska Girl Scout Triple One Sixty-One. I'm working on my Silver Award project, which is the highest award a Girl Scout can achieve. My project is Feed the Need Little Food Pantry. I spent time learning what our community needed and was approved by the Girl Scouts of Maine to build a food pantry. My pantry will have non-perishable items, items for pets, baby items, and hygiene products. From November first to May first, I will only put dry goods that will not freeze. The other months, I will add all items because I will not have to worry about things freezing. The hope is that someone has... The hope is that if someone has an item at home they are not going to use, they will drop it off at the pantry box for someone else to use. Part of my project is to keep this pantry going until I leave for college and have another person take it over. I would like to ask permission from the town select people to place my little food pantry box on town property. I was thinking outside the town office because it gives privacy to those that are going to use the pantry. And the yard is cleaned and available year-round. Another option, I thought, was the new pocket park on Eleventh Ave. But I'm worried the park will not be cleared with snow during the winter months. I ask the town select people for your input on where you think I should put the pantry if approved tonight. Thank you for your help.
Well done.
You have to stay in case we have a question.
You're not free to go yet. So working with Laurie has worked closely with the girls, with Samantha and her mom on this. We wanted to put something together for like an agreement that gives them access to a location in town. You can see in the draft, and, you know, you guys have a copy of this agreement. We've been sharing drafts and going back and forth. And it just kind of outlines what they're trying to accomplish and what the intent of the food drop-off box is. I didn't really choose a location. You can see that I've left that blank there. We've talked about the pocket park. We've talked about the town office. We've talked about potentially the library as being a good location, but we don't... That would have to go before the library board. So I think it's up for discussion tonight where... With everybody in the board, as to what might be a good location for the food drop-off box. And, you know, the agreement that's in front of you outlines the terms of the agreement, and if approved, would be signed by this board, Jean, and Samantha.
What is the timeframe that we're looking at here?
He wants to know when you want to start this, Sam. It's being built now, right? You're hopeful for town property? And if you can't get town property, you're going to go ask someone privately. The timeframe word caught her.
When would you like to see the box installed? And maybe you're... You plan on having it all available all year long? I think you mentioned something that you're going to have different products at different times of the year, depending on the weather, the cold and the heat. And so can you just kind of expand on that a little bit?
So she... The box is going to be available all year long. We would take out all of the items that freeze during the winter and keep them... We would keep them at our house in our warm basement, and then switch them out on May first. We would start putting canned goods in there and stuff that freezes. So we want it to be available all year long to whomever. She... We're looking at the end... By the end of September, it's being built... It's going to be built this week. It's not going to be ready for this weekend with the Fall Fest. We would need to get it... Because we haven't enough, like a planter, so we'd need cement in there, and with the cold temps, I don't know if it would be... If it would dry fast enough, we would put it up.
Is it going to be... Does it need to be mounted up on something?
No, she has her drawn.
Okay.
Samantha. Samantha, I want to commend you for your perseverance in your Girl Scout events, pursuing it to the very end, to the highest award that the Girl Scouts will award. I'm sure that when you joined the Girl Scouts, you probably had a lot of friends that joined with you that are no longer there. I like to see people that are tenacious and nice, vigorous, and see things to the end. Congratulations.
So I guess one of the spots mentioned was the town office. And I'd like to ask Gary, what do you think about space there? Is that something viable for that size of...
I think that if there would be a place at the town office, it probably would be better in the back corner towards the extended part around the building where there's parking, maybe in the corner back there. In the front, I think, you know, with winter and snow removal, could pose a challenge in the front of the building. It does kind of lean up there a little bit. In the front of the office, there's not a lot of space there. Perhaps, you know, in the back corner of the parking lot, Public Works directors here, they know better as to... There's challenges for snow removal, and I don't know if there's a spot that we can tuck that in where it wouldn't be in the way for Public Works?
We went to... We went before coming here, and in between the address three twenty-eight St. Thomas and your council chambers doors, could we maybe put it there? It's flat. There's cement there, and it's under the E V, so it would maybe, you know... We're building it with pressure treated, so it's not going to be an issue, but it might be a little bit easier because the plows can go up to it and then back later. I don't know how to plow. I'm not even telling you how to plow.
I would recommend, myself, to my board, to put it on the library corridor. Because we wall that in in the winter, and no snow.
Right.
They would have to... I would make that decision. I have my own board, and they would decide that, but I would definitely recommend. And okay, if you want to put there, see if there's a minor spot.
I think that we can figure out a good spot for it. I don't know if we can talk about it all night here. I think the pros and cons of different locations, but I think as a whole, if you guys are comfortable with us working with them, and maybe working with the library, if it works out with them, just to go ahead and say, "Yeah, we like this, and we authorize it," we'll figure out exactly where we need to put it. That works best for everybody.
I think so.
I'm sure that this board is very willing to work with you, and I don't think we need a motion to act on this at this point. We're going to discuss where we're going to actually put it.
Well, I think I'd be willing to entertain a motion to give Gary the authority to choose a spot and work with maybe the library board and the Girl Scouts, and approve this box on town property.
So we have a motion then? So do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Are we all in favor? Anybody opposed? It's unanimous, so it's carried.
I want to add, I think as a board, before we leave, we should still sign this agreement. That way, they're covered, because I, you know, I had kind of mentioned the library would be a wonderful place, but if they choose not to have it, at least we wouldn't have to, you know, scramble to get this signed and all go through this again.
I have a stack of things for signatures. I'm going to catch you all on the way before you head out tonight. This is one of them.
You don't need me to stay and over sign that. I can maybe go down after.
We can do that later. Yep. But you are welcome to stay.
It's quite experience for a girl scout.
She needs to sign it, too.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to Article Seven. Consider a liquor license for yules with Big Ritz Burger and Wings and Long Lake Country Club. Article Seven.
So the liquor licenses are ultimately approved by the state, the state of Maine, but they do come before the board. The board has an opportunity to weigh in. Typically, there is a public hearing process, but in the case of renewals, the licensee can request a waiver of hearing if there hasn't been any issues of law enforcement or crime and stuff like that. So in a brand-new application, we cannot waive the public hearing process, but in a renewal process, we can. And so you have right here is basically the request letter to waive the hearing for each of these businesses, and their respective applications for renewal of their liquor licenses for one year.
I'm sure I got that right.
Yeah, these must be for one year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to accept the applications for both locations.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Motion is carried.
Article Eight. Okay, Mr. Chair. Okay, sorry. When we get to Article Nine, we're not going to have to do that one, but we're on Article Eight, so... So you have in front of you... We have three people interested in being on the Board of Appeals. We have a new member, Daniel Horton, who is interested, a new person who is interested. We have Mark Seer, and also Paul LeVoy, current members. This would be a reappointment to the Board of Appeals.
Should we have a motion to accept these members?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Article Nine. Consider... Consider catering permit for Big Ritz Burger and Wings.
Okay, so update on this, we found out that this event is going to be postponed, so there's no action needed. They're not looking to have this catering permit approved right now.
Okay, so we can table that one?
Yeah.
This is Article 9. Article 10. Consider a quick claim deed for tax account 1882, Tax Map 28B, Lot 1G.
All right, so I'll give you a little, I'll just give you the quick history of this article. Last week, midweek, early last week, Attorney Bellflower's office contacted us regarding a piece of property on Levack Street that was tax acquired. And the attorney was working on a potential sale of that property for somebody who was interested in purchasing it from the people who lost it to taxes. And so the people who have it now, well, it is town property right now, but under the matured tax leave are the simply children of Mr. Levack, who was deceased now and had to work its way through the process. So when Mr. Bellflower, Attorney Bellflower contacted me, I said, you know, it's good timing, we're putting out a board agenda, so we can get this done quickly. So send me a quick claim deed. The board is, under the town's reoccurring article in the town meeting warrant, is authorized to sell tax acquired property after first offering it to whoever lost it, whoever would have lost it. They have a chance to redeem the property for the taxes and maybe sewer fees that are owed on it. In this case, it's just property tax, because there's no sewer over there or on that parcel. So a couple of days later, I started working on this, putting the information together. And when I looked at the tax map and the lot, I realized that it was a piece of land that Public Works had expressed interest in to me. Over a year ago, it was being a really good spot for a snow dump. And in the past, it was apparently an approved DEP snow dump site. It's off of Levack, off the bottom of 11th Ave. You take a right there opposite the water district's pump station. And it's, it was a dead end street. I know that Vinnie has a piece of property abutting at, he's kind of opened up a driveway to access his property there. And so when I realized that it was a piece of property that we, Public Works had expressed interest in because of its central location, to be able to be a snow dump for the town because of its remoteness, it's wooded, it's not too far from Abbrook, it's an approved, previously approved area, I said, you know, I've got to, I've got to do my due diligence and let Public Works have an opportunity to make their case whether or not to release the property back to the previous owners. And so Mr. Bellflower's quick claim deed was not ready to be part of your agenda pack last Friday. It came in yesterday afternoon. And so he followed up with me this morning and I let him know, I said, Bob, I have it, but you know, here's the situation. And I kind of explained to him exactly what I just explained to you. And so that prompted some discussions between Vinnie. Vinnie is interested in purchasing, he's in Abutter. He would be purchasing from the people who we would release the property back to. Unless, you know, they didn't redeem and we put it out to bids. If we, if the board so decided to do, then he would have the opportunity to bid on it. So I think right now, what we've been able to figure out is Vinnie has expressed the willingness to grant the town the rights to use it as a snow dump, because he's kind of interested in it for the same reasons. And of course, his access to his property. We've, I've asked the attorney and I think we'll be able to get some language inserted into the quick claim deed that would accept and reserve the rights to be able to, you know, continue to dump snow there or to dump snow there moving forward. And that would give the town access. The board would have the authority to do that. There's two ways to do that. My question to the attorney was, I didn't know if you would, if it was typical to put accepting and reserving, reserving language in a quick claim deed. And most often you see that in a warranty deed when somebody conveys property to their children or they convey property to somebody else and they retain an easement, right of way, life estate, those kinds of things. And so I think from what I understand, if, I'm going to get feedback from the attorney as to whether or not he can amend the quick claim deed to give the town an easement to put snow there. Vinnie has expressed that he would be willing to work with us either through granting an easement or some, some form of an agreement for a period of time that would do the same. So it's, I provided a map to you, a Google Earth map, and I put a little arrow on it that says sign here. That's the location. I wanted you to see the proximity of the property. It's, it's at the end of that street and you don't see on this imagery Vinnie's, Vinnie's property is there, but it's, it's cut now, it's open and, but you don't see that, I think this is 2013 imagery. But it's basically off the, if you're going on Levack, it's on the downhill side towards town. And it's a very steep ravine there. There's a good enough spot for trucks to back up, dump snow, and then when the payloader comes by, they could easily just push snow down the ravine. It's off a main artery, which is 11th Ave, which is fantastic. And it's also off, just down the hill from Deon Drive, which cuts across or intersects our, our avenues, 19th, moving on, you know, moving on down. So it would serve us really well. Hauling snow is a very, during our winter cleanup, is a very expensive operation. We don't have a lot of places in town that, we don't have any places in town that are ours right now. We get permission to put snow at the school parking lot before you get to the multi. That's always a challenge. It's always a last case kind of scenario. We've put some into Kmart parking lot, and we're not going to be able to do that much longer. We have permission from Giselle Deon over on Highland, in the area of Highland. Other places where we've put some in the past before are behind the church off of Fox and 16th Ave. But that, there were residential concerns there with snow being put there and we stopped putting snow there a long time ago. So the lion's share of our snow has to be trucked to Public Works and the sewer department behind there. We don't have a lot of space there. In the past, we've used the property owned by Joel Hebert, the Morans Cabinets property. They really don't care that we continue to do that. We've added on some, some treatment capacity at the pollution control facility that's taken up some of that available lane. And in the big winter of two years ago, I mean, we had snow, we ran out of room over there and we were putting snow. We had to hire pelletiers to come, Ed Pelletier Construction to come in and two-stage create a plateau on top of it so we could do a second level for our snow dump. Now, that was not a normal year for snow, I hope. I just wanted you to have a picture of how valuable this location would be, because it would save us money. One of the bigger issues that we've, we've, we've seen in the past couple of years is that there's not a lot of contractors interested in providing trucks to haul snow. We have some of our own trucks. We also contract out, contractors are, there's not as many that are interested. And I, I think, speaking with Kevin, they have, what he's heard from his contractors is that they have a hard time finding people to drive those trucks at 2:00 AM in the morning. And so not only is it, it's expensive to haul the snow down that far, when you don't have the trucks to keep your payloader going, it's costing a lot of money per hour. So this, you know, I strongly encourage this board to consider, you know, retaining some rights there to be able to utilize that. It's a perfect area with the information that I have right now. I'd be willing to take any questions, and if you have any questions for our Public Works Director, I would encourage you to ask him as well.
Go ahead, Gary.
Who is purchasing the property?
So.
Okay, okay, number one. Number two, if you already own the property, because by, by tax, you're clean, right? Because you had to pay your taxes, so the town literally owns the property at this point.
Yes.
So the question I have is, why are we giving a quick claim deed to a property that the town in its, in its, in its best interest could keep it for themselves and use it for the next 18 years? And number three, was it offered to the general public before it was offered to anybody else?
Could we let Vinnie to explain how we got to where?
I will in just a second, but I want to, I want to hit on Gary's last question. Gary, we, the property hasn't been offered yet out to bid? Right now, we're at a point that the board has to decide what they're going to do, that, what they would do with that property. And if they were going to dispose of it, they first have to offer it back to the people who lost it. That's how the town meeting article reads. Shall the voters of Madawaska, I don't remember the exact words, authorize the board of selectmen to dispose of tax acquired property after first offering it back to the prior owner? So if they were to decide to sell it, they would have to first offer it back to whoever lost it, as long as they pay all of their taxes.
Correct.
Okay? So Vinnie has already been working to buy that piece of land, but it was all tied up because the Monsieur passed away. And so right now, the way this would work, if I understand it, if the board says, you know, we would be okay with the easement, Vinnie is going to work with the people who lost it. They're going to redeem the property themselves. Okay? They're going to pay the taxes, the town's going to sign a quick claim deed back to them, and he, and he could buy it.
So your answer is my question. The question is, my, my question was, who is the quick claim deed going to? So it's going back to the original owner?
It's, yes.
And then after it goes back to the original owner, then you can, you work on the deed. That's all I needed to know, because if it wasn't going back to the original owner, then it would have to have gone back to bid. So that, you know, the general public would have a chance to bid on it, and if it doesn't, whatever happens after that?
Right.
Okay.
Right, that's all we want to decide, and then he's, he's gonna, we're going to hopefully put an easement into the deed first, and Vinnie's agreed to that and it'll work for everybody.
Yeah, but the explanation wasn't done that it was going back to the original owner. I didn't understand that part.
Yeah, it's okay. I didn't explain that way.
If it's going back to the original owner, then the original owner can dispose of the property.
Yes.
And I feel comfortable with that, just I didn't want this piece of property to be offered to anybody before it was offered to the general public.
Yep, go ahead, Vinnie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This piece of property we've been working on, I talked to Kevin about two years ago, and he said, Vinnie, while Mr. Niall was still alive, he goes, why didn't you purchase it? Because I knew that it was feasible for a snow dump. As you know, in the middle of town, I don't have much place to put my snow, so I'm ended by hauling it all over. So to me, in my mind, it was a feasible piece of property to do the snow dump. So I was working with Niall, and the gentleman passed away. So we had a price set, we're going to do the closing the next month. I knew he was back on taxes, because he says I still owe a year and I'm not current. When he died with the will and the deed and everything else, it took almost two years and they posted the property for sale. That's why when I was working, we'd been working on it for about three months with Bob Effler, we came to a price and everything else. I told him to do a search, his due diligence, to find out what was owed on back taxes. When he did that, he seen the liens. And one, the last one was matured, what is it, only 20 days?
The last, the lien that foreclosed was in April.
April.
For three years.
So with this COVID and everything going on, and Bob Effler was on vacation for a while, we finally got to it and said, look, I made them up, they accepted an offer, I got a sale attempted agreement. I understand how the procedures of town, it goes, give it back to the people that owned it, but technically, the family didn't know about the back taxes until it came to light here. So I understand that the town would like to use the property for a snow dump. I get no problem with that. That's what I want to use it for. I don't mind doing an easement. I know with the quick claim, claim deed, I don't think you can do the easement in it, but what I can do is signing, we pay the taxes, I can make an easement to the town as long as the DEA, DEP approves it for a snow dump, I allow the town to use it, because that's what I'm going to use it for. So I'm just buying that piece of property to butt mine, give me a bigger driveway going in and using it for a snow dump. So, and I talked to Kevin, I have, as you can see, that map that goes around, I own 23 acres in that corner that I'm going to widen up, we can use it all for snow in the winter. I don't mind, quick, it's close in town, it's already been approved, so if you want to use the backside of the property also, this is only, I think, 3.8 acres and I have 20 acres in that area. So it would give the town feasibility for a snow dump area that I'm not using, going to build anything. And in my lifetime, I don't see myself building anything. There's a little garage there. I plan to take it out, flatten everything out, so the trucks can go back and dump snow. I've been working on this for, I think when I talked to Kevin, that two and a half years, almost three years ago. Just that circumstances, Mr. Niall dying, passing away and everything else, and his daughter and son picking up each piece of the properties and we had to go through the probate court and get everything settled. But by having Bob doing the due diligence, I could have did a quick claim deed, but I technically wouldn't own the property until taxes were paid or any lien was taken off. So we're looking at doing a closing on next Monday. If that continues and goes through, the taxes would have brought current, I think there's 900 and something dollars of taxes. I will give an easement to the town before that piece of property continues using it for a snow dump, if needed. Is there any questions of me?
So I have something to say. So I actually met with Kevin and Gary today to go over it, and I think one of the biggest concerns to us was having the availability of snow dumping. And Kevin did bring up a couple other things that he wanted to use it for, and maybe we can ask Kevin to mention that. But I think, I mean, the town benefits from allowing the property to go back to the original owner, because we'll end up collecting the taxes and we'll have a future taxpayer as well occupying that property. So I think if we can satisfy the needs of Kevin and satisfy the needs of Vince together, we can all, you know, come away with this as something positive. So Kevin, if you don't mind.
Yeah. The only issue that I would have is that, as you know, behind the town garage, we're running out of room to dump fill. And what happens is, is that we're almost at our limit and we're running out of place to dump our fill. That would be a very good place to get rid of it, and then at the same time, we can flatten it out and make our snow dump bigger as we go. So if Vinnie doesn't have a problem with that, I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with that, plus I, on the other side, I got 23 acres available to fill, so I can take for the next 50 years old to fill the town.
That was my only question.
That's all I can find with it. We can include it in easement to dump snow in the summer dump, but I don't mind.
I, I, I don't see any real roadblocks here. I mean, with, with easements, as we're discussing, the town's protected and Vinnie can, can go about his business too. I think that's a win-win deal for everybody. Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
So what I would probably ask as this board is if you could authorize a quick claim deed based on, upon these, these understanding, it would be done. And then once that deed is ready to be signed and once the account has been, has been made whole, paid off, all you would have to do is come back in and sign the deed at your, you know, during the week or during the daytime, but at least the, the board action would be done for you to do that.
I make a motion to authorize the quick claim deed, as Sore mentioned in the article.
I'll second.
You have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 11. To consider Public Works Department request to transfer funds from the capital purchases reserve account to repair the furnace systems at the Public Works facility. Kevin, do you want to say anything about what we're attempting here?
I just want to say that, for the past couple of years, we've been fighting with the furnaces on and off, uh, to try to get them to run efficiently. Last year, we did some work with some of them, uh, at the town garage, at the, by Central Building, and, uh, we did make a little bit of improvements on it, but what happens is, is that there's no heat on the school department's side, because our reclamer, the heat reclamer, the whole thing collapsed, it's all rotted out, it's, then it's done. So we've gotten price quotes from three different places to, uh, not to re, to, not to, uh, replace the furnace, but just to add on another section and, you know, to relocate some of the zones to make it more efficient, and add a hybrid hot water tank, so we can shut off the oil furnace, because we're burning about three-quarters of a tank of oil in the summer for, to wash our hands, and it gets quite costly when we can do it for pennies on the dollar with electricity. And then, last fall, we had the furnace at the lake inspected, there was cracks in it. Well, this, uh, summer sometime, the whole thing collapsed, so that's pretty much short. So I've got two prices on that, and what happens is, I'd like to get this going sooner than later, because all the furnace guys are starting to get busy for the year. So I've got two quotes on that. A couple of years ago, we had put away, I think it was around fourteen thousand dollars for an upgrade at the town garage, but I've gotten prices, and, you know, we've talked to some of the contractors, and I think that I would be able to fix both of the, the substation and the Public Works for around that type of money. And I'm asking tonight that the board releases the money from the reserve, so we can go ahead and repair the furnaces to have heat.
So the last one that you got was from HB Pro. We didn't have that one until today, which is why it wasn't included in your agenda, but, uh, Kevin, Kevin pressed, uh, on that, on that proposal. And then we do have funds available in that, in that reserve, that capital reserve account to make those repairs.
So this, this quote that we just received is for the town garage?
No, the one that you just received is at the lake, yes.
Right.
There was one for fifty-five, seventy, ten, and, you know, it's for sixty-five, thirty.
Other questions?
Yep, go ahead.
Part of this is used by the school department, right? The school buses?
For the Public Works in town.
Is there a reason why they're not paying some of this bill?
I questioned that in the past, and I, like I said, man.
So we just keep paying their tab?
I wish that, we probably could get some help from the school department, because, you know, they're using the water, the electricity, the heat, uh, you know, all the utilities, the sewer, and we're being billed for it, but.
Out of that big budget, they should have money to cover this.
I would put their snow bu, their school buses in the snowbank until they forward a little bit of money to pay the heat for their buses.
It's totally not.
I think it would only be fair, but like I said, you know, I'm not the one that makes that decision as far as, you know, who.
Gary, maybe you can elaborate on this a little bit, between the relationships between the town and, and the, and the school.
I think, I think that, that's a discussion that probably should be a discussion of the joint, the board and the school board, to figure out what the relationship there is. Talk about the history, talk about the cost, uh, and talk about any concerns that each party may have, and I think it would be, uh, only fair to have them included in the discussion as to, uh, you know, with, you know, if, if it is desired this board for them to participate more financially, um, then they ought to have an opportunity to discuss that, we're going to be ready, so that they can put that money into their budget line item somewhere. And so right now, I think Kevin's concern is that what's going on on the bus side is placing so much demand for heat, uh, on the boiler, that it's, it's tripping it out all the time. And so, and here we are going into winter, uh, with something needs to get done. And so right now, you have in front, in front of your proposal, uh, it's not to say we can't have the discussion with them, uh, in the future, but we do need to have those buildings heated pretty soon. And I'm not sure what, how fast we can move a discussion along with the school board, uh, on this.
There's not much discussion to be had on this, as far as I'm concerned. This is, uh, very simple, that they pay proportionately, uh, for the amount of bays that they're uni, using in that particular building, and the cost of the heat should be divided proportionately between the town and the school.
Kevin, we do use that other side too, right? We do have a bay, there's a wall that separates between the first bay and the second bay? The first door and the second door?
They have the two last doors on that side, and we have, we have three doors, they have two doors. They, they have the two last to the far right, if you're facing the building.
But we, but the door that, the wall that separates the two is from the first two doors in the middle?
Yes, but the other door besides that, the other two doors besides that still belongs to us.
Okay.
I thi, I think if the funds are available in that capital reserve, uh, account, I think we should, you know, at least attack this tonight to get him the funds he needs, with the stipulation that we're going to go discuss with the school to get that, you know, get a portion of that back, or maybe work out a deal of rental for those, for, for those bays. But I definitely think we should work on this tonight to make sure you can get those, get acting on those furnaces.
Any, any other discussion?
Well, I, I tend to agree, I, I mean, I agree with both of them. Um, I think that, at this point, I don't want to put Kevin in the middle of anything, let's just give him the money he needs to fix when he needs to fix. I think that we've all been in agreement, I don't want to pit the town against the school and, and start this whole big drama, but we have to have a sit-down with them, and I think a couple of board members have already, um, made, start, want to start that process. So, the next budget, we're coming to that very quickly, and it'll be the same board, so we have an opportunity to address these issues, I think, um, going forward for the next budget, and, and I really feel like we have to make sure that that happens. But for tonight, I agree that, let's just let Kevin get this done, and, um, because they don't have this in their budget right now. So if we hold back to say, we have to wait till they can pay half, it won't get fixed, and then, you know.
So are you saying that they go one more winter for free? Is that?
We, we can start that discussion now, Dan, if you want, um.
No, no, but is that, is that the intent of?
That, that's probably what's going to happen, because they don't have that in their budget right now. Like, we have, we have that, that, that has been discussed, there have been board members that have brought up, um, you know, just maintenance of the fields, there, there's a whole list of things. You know, I personally would have liked to see a little bit of, you know, a decrease with the school's budget to help us, you know, um, balance this whole Twin Rivers abatement thing, so it, it's a discussion that we need to have with their administration and the board. To expect that we're going to get them to start paying anything or change anything right now, when their budget's already been approved, is, yeah, it's not, I don't think it's possible, like.
Well, I understand that, but it's as easy as closing two gate valves and a switch on a circulator, and your, your part of the building stays cold for this winter.
I, I'm not, I'm personally not willing to start a war at this point, and, um, you know, I want to have a conversation, but a war, I'm not willing to start.
Well, not a war, but you pay for what you get. If you want heat, pay and you'll get heat.
We're not paying to be here right now, and heat's on. So, I, I'm just saying, like, you have to look at both sides, and, and we need to have this conversation with them as a board to be, I mean, I, I agree.
There are, there are a lot of factors.
I agree, there, there's a whole list of things that we would like to discuss with them, and we're all learning these things as we go, but, um, I, I would like to sit and have a negotiation and talk to them, and, and see what we can all work out together, instead of just, you know, slamming the hammer down and saying we're done, you know? Um, I'm, I'm just, I agree with Jason, I, I don't.
So I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve the transfer of funds from the capital reserve account.
I'll second that.
You have a second? Any other discussion? Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Just one quick question, are, are, is anybody going to approach the school department and set a time and a date when we're going to sit down and actually conduct this inquiry with them?
Um, I think Jason has already requested of Gary that he set something up, is that right? Or you, you already, and Mano, I, I think.
I ha, I have requested of Gary a meeting to discuss, um, the current relationship between the school and the board, and get, we will get things started, but first, I bet, I want to better understand how that school board versus.
Aren't these supposed, aren't these issues supposed to be addressed here when the whole board is here? What, what's up with these meetings?
That's the plan.
Pardon?
That's the plan, but he, I mean, somebody has, somebody has.
We're being informed of stuff that's going on between a selectman and the town manager at a, at a meeting here. The, the, these are, are discussions that are supposed to take place with a full board.
And they will, once we have the information, this is just.
They're not making a decision here, they're just.
They're not making decisions, but these, these things should be, should be discussed fro, from inception with a, an entire board present.
So, so Dan, you know, you have, you have that opinion, and that's fine, okay?
It's not an opinion.
But, well, well, listen, yes, we're, as a board member, you come to the board meetings, you discuss the things in front of you, you vote, there's transparency, but being on the board, in my opinion, does not only mean showing up at a meeting. So I talk to taxpayers, every time I have a question, I want to research something, I come to the town office and I ask for the information. Mano does the same, Jason does the same, Doug does the same. We look for answers to questions that we may have, and if we feel that it's something that needs to be addressed at the board level, then we bring it forward. But I'm not going to bring every single discussion that I ever have with any of these people to a board meeting, because I'm trying to learn and understand. He wants to learn and understand the relationship between the school department and the town, so he's going to do that, and he has every right to do that, and he should, it's his, that's what we get paid to do.
We, 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 we all are responsible for, for certain departments, uh, we have our names to, titled to, to one, two, and sometimes three of them.
You, you have blatantly refused to participate in emails when we try to inform you of things going on.
No, because I want to see things discussed here at the board.
You, you don't want to come in and, and ask any questions, you get all your information on the street, instead of coming in and looking at reading minutes? You have many minutes that I've read from past meetings, just try to figure stuff out? Like, if, if you expect that as a board member, I will only show up here, and I will only sit here and make decisions without any research, knowledge, conversation, or anything, then, then you're mistaken.
So are you insinuating that this is the only place I participate? Have you gone around and, and checked with that man there, his hot talk in the last ten days?
So why are you mad at us for doing the same thing?
Pardon?
So why are you mad at us for doing the same thing?
No, no, I just went and visually inspected the work that that man has done on all of the back roads in the last ten days, as far as all, all of the shimming.
Okay, I don't know anything, I don't know anything about roads.
I don't need the town manager to go around and inspect work that he's doing to make sure that it's being done.
Uh, listen, I went for a ride with Kevin too, and I went to see all the roads. I didn't go inspect, because I'm trying to learn from Kevin, and then I go in and I ask him questions.
But then you're, you're insinuating, you're insinuating that this is the only place that I come to and participate in selectman affairs. Did I take great offense to that?
Well, you're insinuating that we shouldn't do any of that.
You're, you're, you're going beyond what we are discussing here at this point. There is a motion on the floor.
So yes, we will have, we will have a conversation with the school board, and we're going to do our homework.
Yes, well, I want to know when that's going to take place.
Well, in, in a meeting, I mean.
No, no, I want to know who's going to take the initiative to contact the school board, and to set up a meeting, and then inform us of the time and date when this is going to take place, rather than to have issues like Mr. Dufour here that asked us for information six weeks ago, and he's no further ahead tonight. That's what happens. I want to know who's going to take the initiative to contact the school board, and then inform us of the time and date of the meeting. That's what I want to know.
I think that's already in process. They're already discussing that.
No, no, I don't want to know if it's in process, I want to know who. I want a name of the individual that is going to take the initi, the initiative to contact the school. Who is going to do that?
What kind of discussions are we having right now?
Right now, it's just to under, I just want to better understand the whole process of the budget from the school's view, and what.
Well, I am asking the question.
And I understand that, Dan, I'm not trying to say that you're wrong in any way. I'm just saying that's all we're talking about.
Will it, will this be your responsibility to contact the school?
I will reach out to the school, and, and let them know that this board wants to have a discussion with their board on this matter.
Okay, and will you let us know when that is to take place?
I will let you know, I think that I will sit down with the chair and the vice chair, and they'll figure out when to put it in an agenda. We still have another meeting or two to set the town warrant, we still have to get the town budget in place, we've got to go to town meeting, so we have a lot of important priorities that we've got to get done, okay? And this is a discussion moving forward before the next budget season starts, so it's going to be done. I just, you know, will it be done next week? Will we be meeting with, with, with them next week? I don't know that, but I can make the request to that.
I just asked if it was going to get done.
He answered you, he said yes, it's going to get done.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so we have a motion, and did we have a second? I think, okay. Any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Article is carried.
Thank you.
Article twelve, we already covered. Article thirteen, to consider a request by Mark here to purchase an undeveloped street known as Canaan Street. Town meeting authorized to, required to dispose the property.
So Mark, Mark, you're welcome to come up if you want. Mark has requested to the town, the town has a, uh, undeveloped street off of Twenty-Fifth Ave, basically a budding Mark's property, uh, where, where he has those rental units there, and it, and it goes over, it intersects the undeveloped Reed Ave, uh, and then keeps going on through to hit Twenty-S sixth. And so he's requested that the town, uh, sell that parcel to him, um, and so what we're, what we're doing, and, and Mano was, was helpful in getting some information, typically, uh, if, if this was a developed, considered a public way or a developed public way, there would be a clear process to dispose of that, that you have to go through, it's defined in law. It's not declared a public way that I know of, uh, nor is it part of a subdivision recorded at the Registry of Deeds, like we see on some of our tax maps. And so, but it is a parcel, you take, for instance, uh, like Reed Ave, that, you have Reed Ave that goes up, and it's the developed part of it, and then you have the dirt part that basically intersects with Canaan, and then you have what it goes through into the woods. Off of Reed Ave, and that's not necessarily something that affects Mark here in this discussion, but off of Reed Ave, uh, there are parcels there that would be landlocked, okay? If the town were to decide to sell that off. And so, I say that because, you know, this would almost be considered a paper street, Canaan Street, and Reed Ave. I know that, that we, I've had a request from somebody nearby on, off of Twenty-S sixth Ave, uh, a budding Canaan, or basically what is the undeveloped Canaan, and, um, intersection of Twenty-S sixth, um, would be interested in acquiring a piece of Reed Ave, of undeveloped Reed Ave. That situation would create a landlock for, uh, Mr. Dayton Canaan, who has large parcels of property further down, that he would not have access to. Now granted that there is no road there, uh, but there is, on paper, uh, an undeveloped way. So, I think that, in historically, and I think, you know, Lori has talked to Gary about, um, with the planning board, about when we, town sells property, I think they kind of offer it in a situation like this to one property owner, a budding in the other, or they split it. I, I don't know exactly all the history of those transactions, what those, that might look like, but I think that, you know, this board would be, uh, well advised to engage the planning board, uh, for their discussion, and I, and I know that it might not necessarily need planning board, uh, purview, but at least it could go there, so they could officially take a position on it. And I would also like to get some legal advice as to sectioning off or get, or, you know, getting out that, that parcel, uh, to Mark, if, if the board so choose to put it on a town meeting warrant for town voter pool. Now this is much like what we talked about with the easement. Now this is much like what we talked about with the easement for the water district. This is not tax-acquired property, so the board doesn't have the discretion to sell. They would need to get the discretion from the towns' voters. Uh, and I think you could definitely, uh, set the terms of the sale, uh, whether, I, I can't answer to you, to you whether or not you could specifically say, I'm gonna sell it to this one person, or each peop- the person on each side of that lot, or if you would put it out to bids. Um, I know that we have another parcel of land that we're, we're gonna be selling by bid, and it's a piece of property that we own in Frenchville, on the town line of Madawaska, and that's our little pit. And that one will be going out to bid. Uh, you know, it was already approved to be put on a town meeting warrant by the previous board. So, I think right now, uh, you have, uh, and again, I want to thank Manon for, for pulling, putting some time together and getting some information. Um, I think it, it would be, uh, wise to engage the planning board. Uh, I think it would be wise to get a legal opinion as to how we could potentially dispose of it. I, I don't see that we have a need for it, uh, personally. Uh, Reed Ave, you know, Twenty-S sixth and, and the properties between Twenty-S sixth and Twenty-Fifth, there were parcels there, two parcels deep. And when Reed Ave was built and, and you had the undeveloped Reed, there were supposed to be two parcels between each of those avenues, right? And a lot of those have been bought up and combined, if you will, going down, uh, undeveloped Reed.
Well, everything, everything from Fox Street to Canaan Drive, from Twenty-S sixth to Reed, has all been bought out and joined.
And, and further up, I'm saying there are some too.
Further up is after, uh, when you go by O'Neill Clavett's place, when you continue going up Reed, and you cross over Canaan Drive, where it comes across Reed Avenue. Up there, if I remember right, there's three, there's three, if not four parcels left up there that belongs to Dayton Canaan. There's no way to get there, because all the trees have grown up and the other, the road has never been opened.
Right.
And supposedly, according to the town maps, when you go all the way up Twenty-Fifth, when you hit that dirt road before banging a left, it goes out in the woods. Apparently, there's also a section of town property that goes out to join in with Reed there, but it was never developed.
Right. So I think that I would, I would support, you know, disposing of the property. I don't think that we have any, any need for it, but I do think that we at least have to have, uh, a little legal op- opinion on it to see what would be the right way to, to convey this property, uh, because, you know, and it's probably more for Reed Ave than Canaan, because we could potentially be landlocking somebody up there. And so maybe, you know, those concerns, obviously, Mr. Canaan, uh-
Well, actually, you're not landlocking anybody, because you're not affecting Reed, and you're not affecting Canaan from Twenty-S sixth.
Right, and that's what I, that's what I had said, but I think-
And off of Twenty-Fifth, it's not developed, so Twenty-Fifth to Reed Street is not developed at all, there's a bunch of trees there.
But I, I think, but as a whole-
Yeah.
Those undeveloped streets and, and Reed Ave undeveloped had an intent in the past that I'm a little concerned about, that if we were to undo that, there would be some consequences to that, that affect people that are buried in there, in those, in those lots. And so I would just like to get some legal advice on that for this board, so they can make an informed decision. I, I personally think there's a way to do it, uh, so that you can, you know, get a piece of that, of that Canaan Street. Uh, I just don't feel like I'm the attorney that can give this board the advice that they need to make a good, sound decision, uh, to put before the townspeople.
Any, uh, any thoughts here?
So I actually walked that property and took a look at it, and, um, I talked to Mark as well about this, and, and I think it definitely would be beneficial to, to not just the town, but to him, um, to, to get, to get, sell off that property. I, I know his, some of his plans were to, if he can acquire that property, to build another building in the back lot on that land, um, which would help raise tax revenue as well, or tax income from that property. I don't foresee, even if the town planned on doing something with that property, the substantial cost to it, we, I mean, I, I think, I think we should look into, uh, getting rid of it, or selling it off.
Well, beyond that, I mean, at this point, if there's no other questions or issues, we're tabling this on further legal counsel, I, I'm assuming?
Yeah, I think that if, if you could tell me that, let's, let's kind of take a look at the legal side of this, uh, to see exactly what, what it is that we can and cannot do with, in respect to that. And then we can share that information with the planning board too.
Yep.
Uh, if, if they need to be included in, in this discussion or not, uh, we could take it from there, and I don't see, I mean, it would probably be tough to get this done for this town meeting, we've got to go to October.
It's fine.
But, but I mean, I, I can totally see us getting this done. Uh, you're looking to do something next summer?
Yeah, next year, yeah.
And so, we, we're gonna have another town meeting before then.
Yeah, we'll have more than one, we've got at least another seven or eight of them anyways.
So, and we're, I don't think it's that we, we're trying to-
No, that's, that's, this is, this is why I'm doing it so early. I'm not waiting until March to do this, that's why I'm doing this real early, like we are now. So it gives us plenty of time to do our homework, dot all of our i's and cross all of our t's and make sure that everybody's covered.
Okay, very good.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
How, has there been any conversation with the neighbor? Like if they would want half, or like, have you been down that road at all?
I haven't really talked to them about it personally, um, it was an issue when Doug, me and Doug were there, that she had brought up on it, because where the line goes, it actually goes right in the back of her house.
Yeah, because I went there and I wondered if even, you know, where her garage is and it-
Well, the, the thing is, it's like, it's, it's, it's like I had, when I had originally brought this up, so what I did is that, when Mike Seer was there surveying the property, I had him survey the road at the same time, which cost me about fifteen hundred dollars to survey that street, okay? Because we didn't know where it was. And it was also the determination on how the town of Madawaska acquired the property. And this went all the way back to Mr. Reed himself. And, uh, I'm trying to remember his first name.
Reed Boyer.
Reed Boyer, his last name. Okay, went all the way back to him. And this apparently, from what Mike Seer told me on this property, before those four buildings were put there, and before, when all that whole lot was combined together, Reed sold that, uh, Reed Boyer sold that to the Canaans, to Dayton Canaan's father. With the, with the determination that there would be a street here and Canaan Drive would be donated to the town if you would buy it. Okay, and that's what happened, that materialized. Okay, Reed Street was originally supposed to be developed. There were supposed to be four more buildings there, four more apartment buildings that never got put in after Reed's, after Dayton Canaan's father got sick. Everything came to a standstill, and that's why those other four buildings never got put in. There was supposed to be eight buildings there, not four of them.
But there has been no discussion.
What's that?
There's been no discussion. Lori's question.
Uh, no, as far as discussion, one-on-one discussion with them though, I, no, I don't have a problem. They want to pay me for half of the surveying, I don't have a problem with it. You want to split the land in half, give me twenty-five feet, give him twenty-five feet, doesn't bother me one bit.
I'm gonna-
Okay, but that's up to them, you know, like I said-
We're just asking the question.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I just, I just, listen, I, I have no issue doing, helping you, you know, and, and this ends up that you would pay tax on it, it's a win-win. I just want to make sure that that, a budding landowner is treated fairly, so will-
Personally, I get along, personally, I get along with them, fine. I don't have any problems. She's called me up a few times, wanted to put garbage in my dumpsters, and go right ahead, have a ball. You know, it doesn't bother me. You know, uh, I get along with them, they have a swing set over there, it's sitting dead smack on town property, where it's not supposed to be there. Somebody picks up the land and then the swing set can stay there. I know the kids at my, at my four buildings, they go up there and they play with their kids, so I don't have any issues with that.
I would have a question for, since Gary Dufour is here as on the planning board. If, if the property were to be sold, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure where the property line at Canaan is, and how far it is from the building, but, I mean, the setback is five feet, right, for the, for property like that?
Residential, yeah, five feet, commercial is ten feet.
I think we should, we're probably all set, but i- if, if it were in fact too close, you know, the, how would that, the planning board handle that, the transfer of that property if it were to go to one person, and making, becoming non-conforming off of, for the setback?
Well, at that point, if you, if the, if the property is, if the garage is too close to its property, then it becomes a non-conforming building. And then it becomes an issue with, uh, with being able to go behind building and work the building, wherever it is, some work. Uh, years passed, I mean, this is, uh, years passed, it's always been offered in a split situation where one, the abutting landowners each get a chance of, of buying their share, or acquiring their share at this point, if you want, if you just want to give it up for, yeah, what, uh, Mr. Seer went and had the surveying done, if he wants to pay for the initial surveying, that's fine. But the only problem you have there is, uh, is to make sure that when you release Canaan Street, is that Reed Street stays whole, going all the way into the undeveloped land.
It does.
Because I don't know where, I, because I don't know where the maps are, but, uh, I don't know if, Canaan Street is a street that goes through, but is Canaan Street the president?
No, 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 Canaan, Canaan Street goes to Reed Street, crosses Reed Street, then it continues Canaan. Reed Street goes straight through Canaan, is what it does. And I'm only, I'm only going from Twenty-Fifth up to Reed Street, I'm not crossing it. I'm only going where my, the end of my property line is.
So you're not calling Reed Street the president?
No, we're not, we're not landlocking nobody there, because if, in the future, if something does happen and they want to bulldoze Reed Street all the way up to the top, they can do that.
Well, that's it.
It's still town property all the way up there.
Well, it's still-
Okay, and according, and when I had this discussion with Mike Seer, because we had this concern with the neighbors, because according to what Mike Seer told me, and what he found out about this, is that even though I bought the whole property, anybody who lives in that house, like, where the yellow houses that you're talking about, because they're, they're the next-door neighbor, and it was part of a right-of-way, town right-of-way, it always stays as a right-of-way for them. That's what Mike Seer had told me, it will stay as a right-of-way for them, they can still use it as a right-of-way.
Well, if you, yeah, if, if you purchase anything of yours, if you imagine, if they're not managing, then there's a right-of-way.
According to what Mike Seer told me, there's some stipulations in the law about that, because it was town property originally, and that's, because of that, it becomes a, it's still be, it's still a right-of-way for them, because they were an abutting neighbor at the time. Not for the people on Twenty-S sixth-
Right.
But, that person there. That's something that, that you, we can actually probably confer that with an attorney.
Yeah.
With the town attorney, he might be, unless the law had changed, that Mike wasn't aware of.
You know, at that point, at that point, we need to see that, that language, so that we're there, we know what it is.
Yeah.
But if, you know, on the planning board's side, the only issue there is to make sure you don't landblock, uh, the, the, the property behind all those buildings.
Mm-hmm.
And that you, the opportunity of the neighbor having his, his input in either purchasing part of it, or acquiring part of it, or half of it, or whatever.
Yeah.
It's making a difference between the two, and then you go from there, and then, you know, you settle with the, uh, you settle with the, uh, survey costs, you know, there. I mean, that's, it's cut and dry at that point, I mean, it's just-
It is, and it doesn't-
The landowner needs to be involved.
And it doesn't landlock anybody, because there's really nothing there, there's no street there, there's nothing that was built. Actually, he mows half of it, I mow the other half, so it's all lawn and trees and woods.
Okay. Is that all on this issue? Okay, so you tabled this till some future date?
So, Mr. Chairman, do you want us to put that on our planning board issue at that point, or?
Um, I would think, Mr. Picard, Gary, that we would want to do that.
We would, I, I'm-
You want to assign this to the, to the planning board at this point?
I will, I, but I'll get the legal advice on it.
Well, not this month, but next month, uh-
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Article fourteen, to consider the Madawaska Public Library budget. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, sir.
So, um, at our last budget meeting, uh, we were left with two different recommendations, one from the board, and one from the finance committee that were for different amounts of money. I think finance committees was gonna support the full request, and the, um, board was, had a reduction of, of about ten thousand dollars, uh, from la- compared to last year. And so, the board had a question as to having two different recommendations, you know, what would the townspeople be able to act on? And so I did get, uh, legal advice on that, and it, it's sort of an open-ended article at that point, and, and the townspeople could choose one over the other. And so, uh, I did get that clarification from you. Uh, I know that the, the library board met, Ken is here tonight, uh, to, uh, review the budget cuts that, uh, that this board was asking for, uh, was proposing. Uh, his board met, and they agreed to reduce their budget. Uh, they've also, um, agreed to reduce his salary by half of the amount, roughly half of, of the, uh, ten thousand dollar reduction. And so, again, Manon, uh, was very helpful in helping me find some information on the library board, uh, the library, um, memberent of understanding that we have, uh, that we share. Uh, Ken is an employee of the town that we provide to the library. And so, um, my, my, my biggest concern was that, you know, Ken was the only employee in this town, as an employee of the town, who was taking a cut in pay, and, and whether or not I would warrant further discussion, uh, by this board. Uh, I think that, uh, it, it does merit discussion. And that's why, you know, first of all, the intent of the article was to basically come back to you, uh, to say, okay, we have two different recommendations here. Uh, I have the legal opinion on that, and I also have additional information brought to me by the library board that I'm putting before you. So, um, with that said, Ken is here for any additional questions that you might ask of him, uh, and, and you guys can talk about it.
Can we take it as two separate, um-
Issues?
Well, I would make a motion that we just put the article in as we always have done, or not we, but, um, this is what the boards are compending. I know Chris asked if they could have their own article. I feel like that's opening a huge can of worms, because the next time we come through a budget, then we're allowing the finance committee to have warrants on, on, you know, for the public works, and the, and we don't know where our, our budget will end up at all, and, and, um, so I don't understand why we wouldn't just do it as it's always been done, and put whatever the board's recommendation was, and then just put not recommended by the finance committee. So, it, that would be my motion. I don't, you know-
So you're making a motion at this time, is there a second to, um-
A second, Lori's motion is gonna say-
So, we have a second, any other discussion? Anybody else have anything to say? I mean, that's pretty normal.
Something from the finance committee?
Yep.
The only, the only reason Lori is right, that's the way it should be. The only reason the finance committee wanted that extra amount is, let's say you go to a town meeting, and the votes turn it down. You say, no, we don't accept this amount of money. Then what happens is, probably have to have a whole, whole new election. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That is not correct.
Yeah, I'm, I'm-
It can be turned down, and then another motion made for a lower amount or a higher amount?
Nope, just a lower amount.
Can't go higher, you gotta go, but lower.
So I don't even know what the amount is, but if it's, or keep it what it was last year, if I'm correct, maintain the same budget and flatline?
Well, whatever the board puts on the warrant, the board selecting puts on the warrant, it's capped, okay? And so, when it's capped that way, the towns' voters don't have the opportunity to raise it, but they have an opportunity to reduce it. So in this, in this instance, when you have the two motions, the two recommendations, uh, you know, the cap would be the, in this case, the, the finance committee's recommendation for the full request, uh, and then they could consider the board's request.
But in all that chartered, chairman of the board, the board does the warrant to present it. So if you guys say this is the one we're going with, why do you have two voting articles under that warrant? And it's open up a Pandora's box, like you said, because anybody can petition, let's put this on, let's put that on, and have five to choose from?
It's not that there's two-
That's specifically what-
That's correct.
It's not that there's two articles. You have one article with two recommendations, and we see that with towns that have finance committees, you see the recommendations- you see the recommendation, recommended by the board, an amount of money, recommend by, recommended by the finance committee, a certain amount of, usually the same amount of money. And so you get both recommendations, and then the townspeople have something, uh, easy to act upon.
But have we ever done this duel in the past?
What's that?
Have we ever done an article like that in the past?
I've seen them, years ago.
I think it's a different number?
Different number.
I've never seen it.
Not the different number, but the, but the two, the finance and, and the, and the, the board have different.
Oh, yeah, that.
Right, certainly, it's certainly is going in that way.
Right. Those are the problems that you get into when you set up too many different committees. Should be the board of selectmen, straight to the taxpayers.
Thank you. Any, any other opinions or? Ken, did you want to say something? No? All right, so we do have a motion, right? Lori?
Motion, a second.
And a second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried.
I, I, we're not.
Yeah, I don't think we're done.
We're not done.
We're not done yet.
So I guess I can start because when I did make that original motion for the cut, I did refer to page two as items that were looked at during that cut. So the last thing I want to do is, is have your salary cut. And I think from what Gary looked into, because he's a town employee, we can't, or, but my goal is, I, I don't think that that's where the cut should come, there are a lot of other items in there, and I'm hoping we can work with the library board to come up with a better solution than trying to cut your pay.
I, I don't see that happening. We, we, we request basically what we spent the year before, and without affecting operations, and you're going to have some very unhappy, uh, community members if you do that.
Yeah. Have we at all looked into, and I understand we don't want to cut services we, we offer, but have we looked at maybe slow times in the day that we could either cut an hour off of a day or cut a day in total and maybe reduce some of the library aid wages and?
I'm already reducing the, we, we reduced the, when I came on, we had five aides. Now we have three, and we've reduced their hours twice since I've been here. And we're doing it again this time.
So, where, where I get lost in all this is, is that the librarian, the position is a position of the town. So we provide an employee.
Right.
The librarian position is, is the library's, but the employee is ours. And so, the, the library board, where I, I'm not sure what, what's right or wrong here. The library board, you know, probably, and Ken probably was working with them to make things happen, to, to go along and accommodate, agreed to cut his pay, okay? I don't, I don't know that that's necessarily their decision or this board's decision because he's an employee of the town, but he works under their purview, okay? So Ken, like all employees of the town, get an annual eval, evaluation. Uh, it's done by the library board because they're the ones that work with him. They're the ones that know the operation, they govern, they see what's going on, it's, it's their wheelhouse. Uh, but those evaluations get completed by them, they get sent to me to sign off and put into, into his personnel file. And so I think that, I don't know that the memorandum of understanding that we have with the library breaks this out enough for us to understand whose, whose authority is it to reduce or, or decrease his pay? The library, our employee's pay, because it says clearly here that he is our employee. And so, um, I, I, I don't want to take away from the library board that they don't have the authority to set his rate of pay, I just don't know that it's, it's on us or to them. I mean, Ken, maybe you can historically talk to us about, um?
When I was hired, my pay was set by the library board.
Okay.
Uh, there were numerous things that happened, uh, where the library board, where I had gone to the town for like family medical leave, and the library board president made it extremely clear to me that I was not to go to you, I was to go to them, that I was, I worked for the library.
So.
Ken, so.
And, and, I'm sorry, in numerous other things that have gone on over the years, there was, there was a time where, uh, the board removed comp time from the department heads and gave them an extra week of vacation. The town manager at that time came to me and said, you're technically not a department head, you work for the library, so you don't get that extra week's vacation. And there was another time where, I forget, there was something else, but she told me the same thing, it was several years later. So, so I've always been under the impression that I worked for the library board, but it was paid by the town, and they came to that arrangement so that the librarian could have the attractive to the job with benefits.
I think we need to clarify in the future, uh, this whole library thing. Uh, if we don't own it, if he answers to the library board, uh, why are we providing an employee for them? It's up to them to get their own employee, if, if they're going to govern and if they're going to rule over him, and the town manager or the board of selectmen have nothing to say in his benefits and this and that. Uh, we need, we need clarification on this. Uh, we need to either divorce from them completely or, or get things in writing as to how all these details are going to be worked out.
So, do you have the proposed cuts in front of you? Can you explain to us where the library board proposes to cut?
Cut from my, uh, library aid wages, cut their hours, take $1,000 out of the book budget, uh, remove the spring cleaning, which was a contract thing that was done every year to wash the walls and all the shelves in the basement.
How much was that?
$1,000. And take out the $500 for lawn care and snow removal.
Okay, and what was the amount of reduction of your salary?
From there, it was $4,500.
Ken, is there a payroll, somebody, somebody else does the payroll for the library aides?
Yes.
But then he's on our payroll, workers' comp, unemployment, retirement, all of that. But then he doesn't get the same vacations as, we, Dan, I mean, Dan's right, we, we need some clarification on this because, um, you know, I mean, Fort Ken has a friends of the library committee, and they do fundraising, and they do all kinds, I mean, I, I will volunteer here in, in public on camera. I'll go spend a day spring cleaning for you, I'll volunteer. Um, I, I really think there's, I think there's more we could do than cutting his wages, and legally, I, I can't even see how, how that could be done. I mean, I, I think we could, but I mean, I.
There, there aren't many things on here that, that are, you know, the library's, the book budget, which is already pathetic.
But the only fundraiser guys do right now is book sale, right?
Right.
So, I'm going to go back to what I, something that I had kind of expressed my concern in respect to their budget. Uh, we are already, you know, July, August, September, we're already one quarter into, into the, into the budget. And so the cuts are going to be, they've been operating under the continuing resolution like we have, uh, under COVID, but the cuts are going to be more strongly felt as they're going to absorb them. They can't spread that out over the course of 12 months, they're going to spread it out over the course of nine months. And so, um, I think that we need to have a better understanding, uh, figure out what the gray areas are, have a joint meeting again, uh, it could be potentially a couple of board appointees that'll go sit there and meet with their couple of board members and the administrators, uh, to kind of try to get a better understanding, so we have more answers, um, so we can be better informed moving forward. No doubt that, that there's a reason why they got to be where they are, the governance of that, and how it was an evolution over time with many different board members, generate over decades. And so, um, but here we are with, with questions, and so it's worth taking a good look at it before we work on our next budget.
So, a, and I do understand that we are close to the end, and this could have a huge effect. Since I made the original motion to cut the $10,000 from the library, considering that they're looking at cutting $4,500 from his salary, is there any way that I can make a motion to adjust my original motion by the $4,500 to ensure that his budget, his salary doesn't get cut this year? With the strong understanding that we will revisit this entire budget again next year?
The warrant isn't set yet, it hasn't been posted, so you can change it if you want.
So I would like to make a motion that I adjust my original value of $10,000 cut off the library expense budget down to $5,500, ensuring that the $4,500 does not come out of his salary.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Hold on, before you make a vote, Vince, do you have something?
Oh, I'm sorry, Vinnie.
You have to retract the prior motion according to Robert's rules. So if you did the motion, you were permitted a second as a vote, then you have to make a new motion.
Okay.
Because then that way.
Okay, so I make a motion to retract my original motion to cut $10,000 from the library budget.
Right.
Okay, wait, where's the minutes? Because I think.
I believe Dan was the one who said.
I think Dan seconded. I don't, you did.
And? Are you going to retract it, your second, or?
Yes, I'll retract the second.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay. Do we need a vote on that?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
So I would like to make a motion that we ask the library and department to cut $5,500 from their budget for this year.
From, can we, can we, can we say the operating side?
Okay.
Like so that this doesn't come back again?
So from the operating side of their budget.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
Um, I, I, I don't know if we're going to meet with the whole library board or how this is, um, I, I just want to make a point, I would love to have a conversation with you about maybe putting together, like, there, there were a lot of people here in support, and I really think that, you know, we have the names of those people, and I would be very comfortable reaching out to them and saying, hey, could you guys help me do a fundraiser? Um, and let's see if we can, um, you know, I, I think I can get volunteers for spring cleaning, so let, let's see if we can go about it that way, okay? Before you.
Before he leaves.
Okay.
Before you leave, can we ask the finance committee to revisit their vote on our new number now? Is that something that's acceptable, or?
That would be impossible, because what happened, we never, we never had, we never had a second to our motion.
Right.
You never did?
Really?
Not, not with the one recommended by the board of selectmen.
So you want to.
I had to, had to talk to Chris.
You want to reconvene the, the meeting of the finance committee, we'd have to post an agenda.
I mean, we could ask them if they want to, we not necessarily force them, but.
Well, I would be willing.
Okay.
And so could Chris.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori? Where are we? Article 15, to consider an article for the town meeting warrant to release sewer line easements at 170 Main Street on Tax Map 5 Lot 161, that's 93, Vitale Drive on Tax Map 5 Lot 162, 91 Vitale Drive on Tax Map 5 Lot 162, and on property located on Tax Map 5 Lot 164, all in Manaus.
Okay, so, I want to, uh, I'm going to ch, I'm going to give you an update on this. Uh, I've been having this discussion, Bob Bellflower, Attorney Bellflower, has been working for the GSA to, uh, put this stuff together, this, these, uh, these requests. Um, and it originally started with the property on Main Street in the intersection of Vitale and Main. Uh, but then GSA started chasing them down because there's two other parcels there, uh, that, they've already acquired the middle one. They're, they're in the final stretch of acquiring the 170 Main Street property. And then, uh, they've, they've made us an offer for the tax-acquired property that we have as the last house. Um, they've already sent an offer that's already been accepted by this board. Uh, we're just waiting, um, on them to provide the, uh, the quick clean deed for that. They also went down further and chased the, an easement on what was formerly the Twin Rivers property, that big parcel that abuts the Twin Rivers complex in Martin Brook. And I think, you know, I, I went back and I gave that some thought, and I, I sent an email to them. I said, I think there, there were no houses down there, there were no sewer easements. There is a sewer easement down there, but that's for a main sewer line that comes, that cuts across Martin Brook and then heads down, uh, towards the railroad tracks, and then parallels the railroad tracks, but headed east towards the mill complex, and then it goes underneath the rail and it hits, uh, it hits a collection, um, um, station there before going out to, to the pump station, uh, just on the other side of the customs facility off of Bridge Street. So I, I mentioned that to them, I said, I don't think we're looking to give up the easement on the Tax Map 5 Lot 164, but the other ones are properties that they acquired, they've acquired, uh, but they want to have full title and interest without any, anything attached to it. Uh, and they're asking this board to, um, basically, uh, put this before the towns voters because we have to go to them to release those, those, um, those rights. Pretty, pretty straightforward. And I've already got the, the language in the, for the warrant article, and I just need to remove the Tax Map 5 Lot 164. Any, you have any questions?
Then I need a motion.
I move, make a motion to move the article as written with the removal of Tax Map 5 Lot 164.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
I'm so dumb. I was looking at this.
Um, I probably need a motion to go beyond the two hours.
A motion.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, we're good to go. Um, Article 16, to consider the adoption of the 2020-2021 general assistance, and it's eight through H.
So these, uh, these appendices are basically what are the, uh, the maximums that can be paid for general assistance for various, uh, means of assistance, be it food, medication, uh, heating, rental, uh, these come to us every year. They're set by the state, uh, under guidance from DHS. Uh, you don't have really any authority, um, it comes to us, we have to basically adopt them here locally. Um, any questions? This is, these, these appendices is what our administrator uses for when they look for eligibility and the maximums. Uh, there's calculations that are used, that are derived right from these, uh, appendices.
Do we have any authority to change or do anything about this other than to accept it?
No, you have to accept it.
Then I need a motion.
A motion.
Hello, Lori?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Motion passed. Article 17, consider the 2021 town. Consider the 2021 town roads paving project.
Kevin, you want to come up to the hot seat?
I think we kept the best for last.
So I'll, I'll kick it off here. Um, Kevin also has a request, um, that he put before you.
Oh, yeah, right.
As well, like that to be, uh, other business. And I wanted to mention that earlier. So before we get done, uh, here with this article and before we adjourn, Kevin's going to be on the hot seat and we can talk about, uh, his hot topping project, if you will. Uh, the work that he's done and the work that still needs to be done. Um, I'm going to kick it off here, uh, this, this discussion. What you have, uh, in front of you was last year's proposed 2019, 2020 road paving repair and paving project that was considered by the townspeople last year. Uh, and that one listed the roads, the length of the roads, the width, the estimated tons, uh, estimated cost based on an $82 per ton, uh, price to, to purchase and have the, the product put on, on the, on the surface. Uh, you have it broken down by roads and in-town streets. And so back then, the, the board was looking at a roughly $3 million project. And we, you know, that was approved back then. Uh, but then COVID hit this year in March and, uh, was caused the board to reconsider under the authorization to kind of take a pause and reassess whether or not we wanted to go forward with this. So, uh, in, in the discussions that we've been having on and off related to this, you know, prior, prior board meetings, it was in, it seemed like it was a desire to maybe do something next year, but the scope was questionable, the scope of work, the amount of money to borrow. And so what I've done is provided this as a, as a background. I think Kevin can, I'll let Kevin, before I let this go here, Kevin can talk about the priorities and how he feels about this, this year, which you have, which was last year's proposal, uh, and the quantities and the streets and the roads. Uh, I've given to you a set of loan amortization scenarios. And starting at a million dollars in $500,000 increments up to $3 million with terms up to 10 years, 15 years and 20 years at a rate of 2% interest. So we recently, uh, with the bond bank secured a loan for our sewer department at 1.375. There's no better time to borrow than right now. I can't tell you what the market is going to be for the bond. When we would do this, if we were to move this forward, it would be borrowing in, uh, fall. The, the main municipal bond bank has two borrowing periods. They have the, the spring bond and the fall bond. Uh, I would be more apt to want to borrow in the fall bond because that would allow us to be able to kick off that first payment further down in another budget cycle when we have some debt fall off, uh, fall off the rolls that we have right now. One particularly, which is a loan, uh, that we have, uh, with Catard and Trust, two, two payments left on that, um, at $117,176. So right now you have a range, um, of, of payment plans. I think that the, the direction that the board, uh, or my read on the board's discussion about this project was, uh, let's look at it from a budget standpoint, uh, see what we can potentially afford. Let's get a, an update on our, our outstanding loans. So a schedule to see when the loans fall off. And, and then kind of have a discussion from there. So, um, with that said, I don't know when you'd like to start to get Kevin's input as to the project. I mean, I, I pass it off on to you.
Before, before we question Kevin, uh, the Catard and, Catard and Trust loan there, we're still showing two payments there, but we're showing payoff in 2021?
Yes.
So we, we, we still haven't paid 2020?
I got to look into that. Payoff date's 2021? I don't know.
Sometimes it falls in the fall.
Right.
People make a payment in 2020 right now.
So that's, that's what it is? It's this payment that's, that.
I would do it next fall.
Okay. Payment date's 2021 and we haven't hit that yet.
Right. But I'm just saying, I was just questioning that we still have two payments and yet. If it's the same date this, this year, then.
Yeah.
We're, we're a week away.
Yeah. So last year, under last year's proposal, what we were doing, uh, what we were attempting to do, was cash flow this out to be able to capitalize on debts that we were going to retire. We were going to push off the borrowing as far as we could so that we, the loan would fall off, to coincide with the new loan coming in. The other thing that we were going to do was currently we were budgeting at a rate of $264,000 a year in road reserve projects. In the past, the town used to put 350 or something like that, all in Kevin's, all into the, uh, Public Works budget. The thought back then was that being able to tackle a large amount of roads like this would allow us to not have to pave as many roads per year. And so we would be able to reduce the amount of money we budget annually for paving, to be able to kind of reduce in our budget, an amount of money coupled with the debt service that was coming off the rolls for the old C S O loan, which is the very top, uh, loan on your, on your spreadsheet. So that this was going to be a net neutral, you know, no tax increase kind of project. And so I think that we can still achieve the same thing. We're a little further along now than, um, than, um, to be able to do that. Um, so I think the cash flow kind of works. Um, I guess what this board needs to consider after talking to Kevin and getting his opinion, uh, and taking that into consideration is what's the scope of project going to be? Kevin can kind of talk to you about his, his thoughts on the priorities that were listed out here last year. He can talk to you in, in, in the context of what the work that they've done this year that he could probably, it's probably going to help. You know, the corrections that were made in the road this year is going to help these quantities next year, potentially. And then from there, um, once you're comfortable with what you've heard from him, the sport's going to have to decide, uh, what's the scope going to be? Uh, what's the, what's the amount of the project going to be? And ultimately the borrowing, uh, amount going to be. And the way that we would finance this is that we would, uh, we would incur interim financing in the spring. Uh, we've done that in the past. And interim financing will allow us to pay the bills when they come in. Because we wouldn't, we would only want to have the fall bond so that we could have that debt service in a, in a subsequent tax commitment year. So by utilizing the interim financing, uh, once that's done, we get the fall bond. The bond bank basically grabs all that, it pays us off to pay off interim financing and, and we're good to go. So that's how the project would play out, uh, from a cash flow perspective. Uh, we just need to hear from Kevin, uh, and then you guys can kind of talk about it. No pressure, Kevin.
As you know, our roads are in dire need of repair. And, uh, and we're beyond, some of them were beyond, beyond, how do I say that? It's, they're in tragic need of top coat and stuff like that. The issue is, is that how much do we put and where do we put it? I know that we're in a predicament right now with the money situation, but the longer we wait, the more expensive it is. So I just want to get, you know, what you guys feel as far as an amount that you feel comfortable, if you feel comfortable borrowing this year or holding off a couple of years or whichever. That way I can make my plan and, you know what I mean by a plan of attack? And figure out how we're going to try to give the taxpayers the most bang for their buck and the best we can do what we have to work with. As of now, this year, we've been patching, as you see on and off. Uh, how do I say it? It's probably, it's not the best, the best way, you know, or definitely in overlay is the smoothest way. But we're doing what we can. We're patching the places where it's falling apart. We're digging up where we can where there's soft spots and filling it in with material, adding pipe for drainage if we have to. Uh, it's very expensive. We've done so far, Love Out Sewer, we did two and a half miles. We put 28 loads on that of hot top. We've tackled, uh, Lakeshore Road from Al Wallett's all the way up to, uh, almost the golf course. We put 21 loads down on there. We put, uh, one load on Greenport. We ran out, we probably have half a load left for patching towards the town side. And now we're about halfway done Guyan Road. We're up to Lucian Loveout. As we put down on Guyan Road, we've added 20 loads so far. We probably have another 20 left before we hit the end of the road. Like I said, everybody's got a, uh, everybody's got a complaint or a request. We're trying to knock off the priorities, the most traveled, the worst condition roads first. And then we're just going to disperse it as we go to secondary roads, less traveled, stuff like that. So I don't know what you guys, what you have in mind in mind for as far as if there's any borrowing or, I definitely don't want to make that decision, but.
So I do have a couple of questions.
Yep.
So if we were to say, hey, here's $3 million, do the entire project, how big of a timeframe would you have this project completed? Is it a year, two years, three years?
That would probably be a two-year project. Because what's going to happen is that you're going to have to do like, I would tackle maybe the back roads the first because they're the worst of. And then after that, what we've got to do is we've got to prepare in town, lift up catch basins, uh, you know, re, re, uh, set the, the storm drains and sewer covers. I don't want to do that a year ahead of time and have the plow bang that all winter long. So what I would like to do is that the state projects don't come out till the end of July, August. We tackle the front, the back roads from probably the end of May, June, when the frost and everything's gone and we have stuff prepared till mid-July. And then after that, if they say they're going to come back in September, we give me a little bit of time to prepare in between and we're going to go as much as we can. If I can get some done in town the first year, we're going to do it. It's, but I'm figuring it's going to be a two-year project at least.
So with that said, I know Gary was playing with some numbers and, and I believe, Gary, what you said is some of, some of that money would be coming out of what we're already giving him for, for, uh, road repairs. Given that some of that will be taken away, is there going to be enough of that left that on year three and four, if other roads start deteriorating, that you can fix those? Or do we need to play with that a little more?
So I would, what happens is, is that if you, if you start playing in the designated, what was set aside for the, like, the, the hot top every year, that's not a good thing because I think that what's going to happen is that I would probably try to base my loan, in my opinion, for maybe what the loan is right now, the occurring loan. I'm thinking, because if we take out, let's say we got 325 a year, we hot top. If I pinch into that, we're not going to do much hot topping for a hundred thousand or something.
And that's my concern. I don't want to be touching that money if you can.
I don't want to fall behind, that's the thing. I want to be able to be comfortable and, and not add a, a, you know, a cost to the taxpayers, but also, no, not fall behind like we have in the past. Because in the past 10 years, we fell behind and then some.
Right.
And it's going to be very hard to catch up without, you know, without it, you know, being costly.
Right. I definitely agree with that.
You know, if they can afford to do, go ahead and do the $3 million loan, great. If they can't, you know, give me a number that's comfortable that, you know, you guys decide and we'll make it work for the best we can.
Yeah.
So, so currently, you know, if you have the project you're doing, if you have the loan, you have the project, right? And so.
Right.
Those are all still roads that are going to have to be done.
Well, yeah.
And so, but you're going to be faced, or the board, subsequent boards, uh, are going to be faced with either funding that, taking some big bites at it and funding it through an annual tax, uh, request, uh, in the budget or further lending. And so I don't see that these projects are going to go away anytime soon. I just think that this board needs to consider long-term. 20 years is a long time on a paving cycle, I find. If you, if you were going to do the, the $3 million loan, and I'm talking out loud so people can hear, the fif- at 15 years at 2% interest, you're looking at an annual payment of $231,000. Uh, we currently have in the budget $117,000. So, um, Kevin, in his budget, right, the proposed budget that we just looked at has $264,500 in road reserve, uh, road project reserve. And then he gets another 100, uh, 100,000 in his budget for paving, like for cuts and cold patch and, and patches here and there, random, random kind of work. And so I still think that at, you know, the board would have the ability to, uh, you know, if you were going to go with the $3 million project for 15 years at 231, you'd basically have to reduce Kevin's budget or the road reserve budget, capital reserve account by about $100,000.
114.
114.
Yeah.
To, uh, be flat from a budgetary standpoint, from a, going to the tax voters. Uh, and that still leaves.
Gary, can I, can I, so, so tell me how you're getting to that figure when you say that it would be flat? How, how do we get to that figure again? Are you assuming again that we're talking this particular type of interest rate? I know you mentioned 15 years and I don't know when, we talk about roads, Kev. I mean, are we talking, I mean, 15 years to me is, is like really, uh, roads don't last 15 years?
The state cycle, they're usually pushing seven to 12 years. That's what, if it's a high traffic, it's on the lower end. And if it's a less traffic, it's on the higher end due to the wear and tear of the hot top.
So, so what is, what is that? How do you reference the roads that we have to deal with? Where do we write there?
I've seen some that were hot top 15 years ago and they're still good. And I've seen some that were hot top six, seven, eight years ago and they're, they're beating the nothing. It's, it all depends on preparation and traffic and stuff like that. The hot top is not what it used to be 20 years ago. They've taken out a lot of the, the cancer-causing chemicals and the.
So again, if we were going to be safe, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be dealing with anything more than 10?
If we, if I would want to bet on anything, I would probably, if we could afford it, it wouldn't be more than a 10-year cycle. Because what happens if we wait 15, in 15 years, we'll be in the same predicament that we are now, way behind.
So that kills our flat funding.
Well, eh, yeah, so, so I just, I want to work off what Jason said because I, I was, I've been looking at the same thing. If we did the 10-year, we have to find $214,000 a year for a payment. Because we have the 117, we need 214. There's no way that I would ever agree to say that we're going to take it out of the current budget because then we're just going to fall more behind. Exactly, you know, what Jason said, the other roads will never be able to be touched and we're going to be sitting in this situation again. So I guess, um, you know, we're in a unique situation. This is the same board for the next budget. You know, COVID gave us that. So I, I, I'm just, in my mind, I'm thinking if we do this 10-year, I'm, my head is going, well, okay, where are we going to find $200,000 in our next budget? I mean, we have wiggle room right now because of where our revenues are at, but, um, I guess I'm just warning you, like, I, I personally don't feel like I want to go into this counting on taking money from the asphalt budget. I'm going to be working really, really hard if we do this to find money or figure out how, you know, we can get the 200 somewhere else.
So if, if we do go with the 15 years and we don't cut at all what you're currently getting for roads, can you use that money that you're continuing to get for roads to make those 10-year roads last the 15?
What happens is, is that.
No, I'm just throwing.
Yep.
And what happens to the rest of the roads?
Yeah.
Because, because.
What happens is about, it's about $100,000 a mile. So if I'm left with $200,000, I can hot top two miles of road a year. So you're, you're still going to, you're going to fall behind, in my opinion, because you don't go far with two miles of road when you've got 30 miles that you've got to maintain or 60 miles.
We need, we need $5,000, $500,000 to take care of our. We need, we need five million, five-hundred thousand dollars to take care of our roads, if you're looking at, 'cause there's fifty-five miles, I think.
Right, that's what we've been told.
And, um-
So Lori, can you, so you, you calculated it out, at a per-ton price, this year's, this year's dollars per ton, the amount of roads, to come up with that number? So if you spread that out, that cost out, over a ten-year cycle, how much money is that?
Oh, you know what?
Five-hundred thousand dollars?
I started a, I really, there, you know me, I'm a nerd, I started a whole spreadsheet, and I, I didn't finish it, but I was so discouraged by the time I got halfway through it. Like, so I'm saying, we, I mean, really, we'd need a five-million-dollar, um, loan, and we'd need to keep giving him the money we're giving him every year, if we really, you know? Say that again? Four-seventy-five?
So simple math, if you are on top of your roads already, and you are going to assume a good paving cycle to stay on your roads, to have them cycled out every ten years, in today's dollars, you'd have to spend four-hundred-seventy-five to five-hundred thousand dollars every single year to stay in a ten-year paving cycle for towns and streets, uh, roads and streets. So, how you guys wanna, that's, that's, those are facts.
Well, and I guess, that's my point, like, we're already short, every year, every year we're short, that's how come we're in this mess. So we can't go into this thinking we're gonna take more out of that asphalt budget that's already there, because we're already short. So I just, you know, putting that out there, you know, I'm not saying we shouldn't do this, I'm just saying we need to be very aware of where we're taking the money from, 'cause we're just gonna put them right back in the same hole, quickly.
I guess my, my point, Lori, for this board, is that no matter what, you can, no doubt that the town's paving needs are going to be met with a combination of pay for as you go and borrowing. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it, and you need to decide how, what, what that ratio is going to be. So when you look at debt service and, and spreading out the cost, does that work out better? Is that, is that able to get you caught up quicker, and are you able to put down more paving per year as a result? Or what's, what's the sweet spot? What's the balance? What's the ratio that you wanna have borrowing and pay for on, on, every single year? Based on, you can round that up to half a million dollars a year, because the cost of asphalt goes up every single year.
A past board member, years ago, had addressed this, gentleman sitting right there, Mr. Dave Morn, had convinced the board that it'd be to the advantage of the town to set aside half a mil every year to address this hot top issue. Subsequent boards thought that this should not be continued, thus tonight, we find ourselves back in the same mess. Apparently, we don't learn from our mistakes.
So that just goes to saying what, like, we can't take more money out of that, so whatever we do, we have to realize that this, we have to figure out how to fit this into a budget without stealing from that account. It's already short.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't entertain cutting that at all.
No, and that was your point.
That's not what I'm looking at, right.
When you say cutting, are you talking about both his line and his budget, part of the road reserve?
Either, the two, the one of them's two-something, and the other one's a hundred thousand, I wouldn't, I wouldn't touch those at all. I'm just working with the, the difference in years and figuring what we can do and to, to try to, you know what I mean? To, to make the loan payments worthwhile, but at the same time, not cutting us short.
You, you started talking about, if we were gonna address all of these particular projects, these roads, that this would be a two-year affair.
Yes.
So, so at this point now, do we, do we consider this maybe to be a three-year affair, so we can kinda borrow in a different direction, at a different time?
This is the lowest interest rates you've seen ever.
Yeah, I don't think you wanna split that up into two loans.
We split it up too much, we're gonna cost ourselves more.
You have to consider that, you know, it's gonna be the board's decision, but you have to consider that, you know, it's always tough going to the taxpayers, number one, to ask to borrow, to spend money like this. Number two, you don't know what the interest rates are going to be, they're not better, you're not gonna find better rates. Number three, I think that, again, I'm gonna go back to what I was saying, you know, if, if we're just gonna look at our debt service, and we have a hundred-seventeen thousand dollar loan falling off, and that's what we're comfortable with for a payment, then we can only afford a one-million-dollar project. Well, his, his two-hundred-sixty-four thousand dollar road reserve account is, is not going to be able to cover the gap, okay, because we didn't incur a bigger loan. And I'm not saying that we gotta borrow more money or spend more money, what I'm saying is that, knowing that we have fifty-five miles of road, and knowing that we ought to be spending, if we were on a, caught up in on a good paving cycle for ten years, you know, stretch it to twelve, whatever, we're, we're spending four-hundred-fifty to five-hundred thousand dollars a year to keep up on it. We inherited Lake Shore Road, it's four miles, okay, that we didn't have to worry about before. Back in the day, when I was a selectman in Frenchville, we used to get, it used to cost forty, forty-five dollars a ton to get this stuff put down, we've more than doubled that cost right now. And we have more roads to take care of, so. It's tough.
We have three loans here that are gonna be paid up within a couple of years, that, that look to be somewhere in the one-hundred-and-eighty thousand, I mean, yeah, one-eighty? I don't know, somebody can add those three figures together there.
I did, I did add those, there's-
I didn't add them, Doug, 'cause we need a plow truck and a fire truck. That's why I didn't, I mean, we're getting, like, you know what I mean?
I don't think you can look at your equipment that's gonna fall off the roads here, because you're gonna find that there's already other equipment that's, that's gonna need to be replaced. What's falling off, that's gonna be gone, that I think is not something that's reoccurring, well, it's gonna reoccur, but that's not a piece of equipment, is your paving loan for one-seventeen. At year four, we have four years left on our streetlight project, the thirty thousand dollars. We've got the ambulance loan in there, that's paid from the ambulance reserve account. The loader lease is, is forty-two nine, two-ninety-five, the other loader is, is, we're not that far along. Before, we're talking about replacing that one, we're gonna rebuild the grader, we need a fire truck. So I think that, you know, there's, there's not a lot of loans that are gonna fall off here, that are gonna allow, unless we stop fixing, buying equipment, or unless we pay for as we go, figure out a way how to do that, that are gonna be able to give you some flexibility here to offset.
Go ahead, Benny.
I agree with Mr. Dave who said, so six years ago, we decided to designate half a mil toward just hot top, and that wouldn't be a critter budget, and I agree with our taking, because you need that just to maintain. So with today's prices, the new tar prices, you almost have to go through and put it to the voters to go with one mil every year, just for road maintenance, and take half of the mil to look towards a loan, and then try to max the overlay as much as possible to make up the difference. So you're gonna be somewhere around two-seventy-five, three-hundred thousand, so if you push the loan in twelve years, it's just gonna- I, I mean, we have no choice, but a road's gonna fall down, and they're gonna deteriorate so bad that in ten years, we're gonna be twice as tired as we're, we're gonna be putting more and more. So it's almost this, you have to take this one to the voters, in my opinion, and say, look, you want good roads, like it was, like we did six years ago, the Selectman Morn at the time, you want good roads, designate air mark this much. We understand that half of it goes into the budget, take the other half, and whatever you can push on the overlay to offset the difference.
The only thing that you're not aware of is the undesignated fund is at zero or below, and that's the overlay, don't touch that.
Okay, no, but the overlay is-
Don't, don't touch it.
Your overlay is what you adjust every year, you decide.
No, no, right.
Did you max it last year?
We didn't max it last year.
Okay, so if you max it this year and take as much as you can get, I know you can gain another seventy-five thousand there, and put it with half a mil extra, that's gonna give you close to your three-hundred thousand to go for a twelve-year.
Well, you can't use your overlay to finance things.
I understand, I understand, but it makes up the difference to pay all the way to the end. It's a kind of a simple howl. It's, you're bringing it to the voters, so it's not where the selectmen are saying, okay, we're gonna designate half a million a year just for this road, so you're gonna break it to voters and say, okay, do you want good roads? Do you wanna pay an extra half a mil, like we did before, you know what I mean? So instead of having just half a mil air marked just for the road, you put it as one mil.
I understand. We're, I think we've been all battling here to try to, to keep this flat funded if we could, and that's, that's, that's the issue here.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
Yep.
And I think if, if we go with the full three-million-dollar project, I, I don't think we'll be able to do the full three-million-dollar project and bring up what we're already giving him for tar every year and get that approved. I definitely think we should focus on trying to get that three-million-dollar loan, and keeping what he has now, and maybe revisiting what we can do to try to increase what we give him every year after that, but.
I, I do, I do think, and Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I do think that if, should you move forward with the larger, the larger project, that you're gonna have an opportunity to not have to pave as much for a little while, okay? There's still gonna be projects that need to be done, but the main arteries, the long roads, you know, those things are gonna be done for a while. And so I think that, you know, for a little while, there's gonna be some risk of it here, on how much we have to pave every single year. So yes, if you, the board or the townspeople wanna continue to fund the reserve account, I'm all, sign me up. You know, I'm all there, but at the end of the day, you know, you gotta present something that's acceptable to them to pass. You know, something that they're comfortable with, so finding that right balance.
Well, and to Dan's point, it's, it's gonna be hard, I mean, just continuing off what he said. We'll do this, and two or three boards down the line's gonna say, oh, you just put three million dollars in the road, let's take his two-sixty-four and put it somewhere else, and that's the problem, like, you can't ensure that in two or three years from now, that they're gonna leave that money alone.
They're gonna follow suit. Right, they're gonna follow suit.
You know, so if there was a way we could make that decision and, and make it stick, then-
We'll be dead by then.
You will, you will be if we keep fighting.
Well, yeah, you know, if you designate, if you designate a reserve account for specific purpose,
Yes.
it's gotta be spent for that specific, specific purpose, or-
No, I know, but like, maybe three years down the road, they're gonna say, oh, we're not putting any more in there, because we don't need to. I mean, and that's what happened this time, I think.
Let's do what's right, right now.
Right.
Right, let's look at that, that's what I'm saying, so.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with either the two and a half or the three million for the ten years. It gives us two-fourteen, we have to figure out how to, where to find, and I'm willing to roll the dice, I, I personally don't wanna go fifteen years, because that's more interest the town has to pay, and, I mean, the roads are gonna fall apart.
Our roads will be falling apart by then.
Right, so that's just my opinion, I'm not making a motion, I'm just throwing it out there.
Jason, do you wanna follow through?
I mean, I'll, I'll make the motion that we go for the three-million-dollar loan for a ten-year term.
A second.
Okay, so-
Yep, discussion.
Do you need more details than that, or?
Well, you know, last year, the only thing that we did last year was that we were pretty specific in our project scope.
Right.
'Cause I think the board back then wanted to be able to show the people what was gonna get done.
Right.
And not just have, here's a, here's a three-million-dollar project.
Right, and that's what I'm basing my number on.
You guys are gonna decide where to put the money, we're not gonna have any idea where that money is going. And so that's why I kinda wanted Kevin to elaborate on this priorities, what he had listed before, as whether, you know, Kevin, are you still comfortable with these priorities? I think that you've indicated that with the work that you've done this year, and you still wanna do some more work, we're gonna talk about that, that, that's gonna help you on your tonnages, because there's been a lot of corrections to the road in the crown and the, you know, the Panse de Vache and all that stuff, so that's gonna help you in, in your shim for the paving project, if you will.
Yeah, what I put down here for, like, priorities and that, that's not set in stone, that's not, you know, that's just, you know, going by, it doesn't mean we're gonna get through to all those, and I'm gonna try to do the most important first, and when we hit that certain amount of mark for the back roads, then we're gonna shut it down and go take care of it in town.
Right.
I mean, I just put that as a list, it doesn't mean that it's a hundred percent correct, and there are some places on here that I see that are probably gonna use less tonnage, but I'd rather shoot over and come out the hero, not the zero, so. You know what I mean, I'm just-
No, I think this is a pretty good guide, and I think if we present it to the taxpayers as, here's our guide, here's our goal, but obviously, that can change last minute, depending on-
That's exactly what was presented the last time.
I don't know what's going on, so.
And we don't, we don't have priorities.
There are gonna be some adjustments to it.
We don't have priorities on our new list, so that's really up to you, and, and whatever.
But is that-
But you're saying the list as a whole is, is good?
Yeah.
So.
In my opinion, there's, you know, some of it's gonna go-
You're gonna include that in your motion?
Some of it will fluctuate in priorities, especially in town, because, you know what I mean? There's some places that we can probably do a little bit without, or just put one finish code, just to correct the road, but I had put down for like a binder and a finish, so I can take that and put it somewhere else. So there's gonna be adjustments on that list, that's just what I threw together, I mean, obviously, over a year or two, the priorities are gonna change, because you have a cover that collapsed, or a road that washed out, or that's gonna change with-
Can we, can we assume that the figures that we're looking at here will roughly stay the same?
I'll tell you that this year, the prices, they're, it's fluctuated, it's, it's not going by oil no more, it's going by manpower, because the companies are having a hard time to find workers, so they gotta crank up their price on labor to pay people to work, so that's gonna affect, obviously, the tonnage. The oil has stayed the same, and the material hasn't changed, but it's like anywhere else, they're having a hard time to have people, good people to work, so. You know, if you want good people, you're gonna have to pay the money, and that's what's happening. I don't see it going up dramatically, but like I said, you know, we had estimated at ninety-five dollars, you know, I've heard instances, there's some projects at the state that paid over a hundred, a hundred-ten dollars a ton for, for machine place.
Gary, if we borrow the three million dollars, is there any, is there any way that we can project how this will affect the mil rate in advance?
Well, you can do it, you can do it in the sense for your own municipal budget, how your budget affects the mil rate. But what gets thrown into are the mil rate, is the counties and the schools, and the assessments. And it all becomes into, it melts into one pot, and so, you know, a lot of the taxpayers, they don't see that, and when they see a rate increase, it might not necessarily be something as a result of the town, it could be somewhere else, and outside forcing our mil rate up. And so, we encountered that this year, we've had to, we kind of absorb some, some increases on, on us, you know, and so to the extent that we can project out, I, I can't tell you, I can't tell you in, in three years from now, if things are stable, and we're budgeting, and revenues don't change, or revenues go up, or revenues go down, or if we have some stupid anomaly that we lose, we have a big flooding event and we lose a part of the road that we have to fund in a given year, assuming that things are status quo on our end, what we can control here, that, you know, a three-million-dollar project for ten years is, unless you find savings somewhere else in the budget to offset that, it's gonna be an increase, okay, in the mil rate. I'm not sure if that's what your, the question you're looking for.
Basically, that's a mil.
I sure hope that this board understands clearly where the shortfall in revenue for the town stems from, and until that situation gets rectified, we're gonna be struggling here. And if we're gonna live within the taxpayers' means, personally, I don't think that borrowing is gonna solve our issue.
And I get that, but if we don't borrow, then-
I understand that part too, very difficult call, as far as I'm concerned.
We're probably gonna have to spend upwards of, over half a million to three-quarters of a million dollars a year annually, raised out of taxes, to get this work done, because it works- Because the work's not gonna go away. And so that's a big, that's a mil, that's a big huge mil rate increase all at once. And so, I get it, in a perfect world, we don't borrow money. It's fantastic to be able to do that. But the, the, the nice side of, of debt service, especially at these rates, that you can spread out the cost over town. So there's two ways, these are, these are huge capital outlays that we have in front of us. And typically, you gotta look at that from a long-term perspective. You can either put the money aside in reserves, and when you have the pot of money to spend it, you spend it. In this case, a decade worth of, of, of tough budgets and coming out of the, that started with the oh eight recession, moving on down, the mills assessment, moving on down. Revenue sharing, the town of Madawaska used to get at a high eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in revenue sharing. And that was whittled down to a low of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Imagine had we been able to have all that, that same level of funding over the last decade, that half a million dollars of, 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 that's half a million dollars a year over the last five million dollars that we've, we've lost over the last decade to be able to do this kind of work. And so, I get it, you can't spend willy-nilly. And, and if we had a, you know, a glass ball to look into and peer into the future, it'd be fantastic. All I can tell you is that we've worked hard to get revenue is up, going up in the other direction, we've been able to accomplish that. But I can't guarantee you what next year is gonna be and the year after that, because we don't know.
Yep.
Should we then say that, you know, we definitely do need to borrow money to pave roads, but but from what I'm hearing, that there's a lot of differences in opinion, should we say that what we've done this year, I've heard a lot of good things that, you know, the people were happy with the patching. Should we do that again next year to see what the year after holds? Push it off a year, just to see where we stand?
Personally, Kevin, personally. Traditionally, I would, I, I would not support a loan, I would not support borrowing money. But seeing the situation with the lack of tax revenue, considering the deterioration of our road system in Madawaska, the roads need to be addressed, because if we wait any longer, it's gonna cost us exponentially what it will cost us today to fix them. So with that being said, as much as I don't like to borrow, I will support the borrowing, but I do have to say that I'm sure glad the taxpayers will be doing the voting at town meeting on this one.
Right, they'll get the final say, so.
Because definitely, our job here is not to spend money that's, you know.
I hear you.
And we're here trying to balance the best of both worlds.
Yeah, Dave.
Did you see something?
Yep.
Uh, just a little project that we did when I was on the board with Vinnie. Before the Akating Congress, uh, the Mill Street turning into a Main Street looked like it had been bombed. It was just as bad as the, the streets in Baghdad. And I remember talking to Christine, I says, we're gonna get that hot top, people are gonna be marching in there and we're, we're having it, the Akating Congress needs to be done. Well, that street is three lanes wide. Traditionally, we would've paved three, a lane wide. The lane going towards Canada was nothing wrong with it. I said, why are we paving that part, is it because of the color? I says, let's pay, let's, let's pave the two lanes coming on. And we ended up saving one-third of the color. And we have a lot of roads like that over here, down our road is one of them. It doesn't need to be hot top from one end to the other, and I realize the contractors don't like to do that, to pave with piece and then link it up and go pave with another piece. Canada has some of the longest roads per capita in any country, because it's a big country. And the only way they can keep up with their hot topping is by being professional road patchers, basically. And you do a great job at it. And between the patches, it's a little less lighter color, and where the patches are, it's a little darker. But they really do a good job and it keeps it light and it keeps the wheels rolling. I think we can do that, I would recommend that we borrow the amount of money that that loan is being expired for, and if you can find a few more dollars to add to it, whatever that money we paid for a loan, to use that for a new bridge. And if we need to address this in two more, in two years down the road, to do some more, because we feel that we need to do more, we can handle that time. But this year was a great year, because Kevin did a great job on patching, not just patching, but taking care of mud holes. Because had we had that hot top put on this year, we would've been skin coating over mud holes. And that would've lasted about three years, maybe five years, because we would've been to the same place again. So I think it's better off if you bite a little bite at a time than to bite a big bite. A big bite and to again put his budget in peril by skimming his hot top maintenance budget and trucked it through over fifteen-year loan and even going down.
Steps back about ten years ago, when we ran into the first crisis with mill, public works, Kevin had a budget of almost four and eight thousand. We went in and raped them, we took it all, offset the taxes, so that we didn't have to raise the rates. In the anticipation we were gonna come back and put more money into the budget, but they never, his capital funding, he never put money back in, so he never had an excess every year, we just took it. So he had money in his reserve account at one time, and we went through and took, to make it so that we didn't have to raise the taxes and make it so that the town was hurting, so. Back years ago, in anticipation that we were gonna turn around, we used money, we're gonna go for a whole interest loan to do the payment.
So that's where we are today.
Yes, exactly, and we gained, I hate to say this, but Kevin, but we gained ten years on the back of the public works. So we went ten years without basically going back and borrowing money to do it, we took all this money out of this company.
Well, I mean, just to put things into context, and we're talking about the same time period, you know, the oh eight recession and that was really hitting in two thousand and ten. And, you know, revenue sharing dipped, okay, at the same time, the twenty thirteen tax abatement, the loss of revenue from the mill, the town cut, the school cut, all of that, hardly any real mil rate increases, was all absorbed.
One point two hundred in one year, we had absorbed.
Was all absorbed in, in operational and, and capital outlays. And so that's, you know, it provided tax relief, you know, provided stability in the mil rate, yeah. But it was all, you know, stuff that needed to get done or replaced at, at some point in time, and, and here we are, you know, and.
It's putting up.
With more roads than we had before.
Putting, putting some good stress on us, I can tell you that.
And, and, and Mr. Moran talked about Mill Street, well, you know, the, the town traded Mills, Lake Shore Road for Mill Street because Mills, you know, that, that was a state aid road. They said, well, we'll take over Mill Street, we'll, we'll kind of fix up Lake Shore Road, MDOT. And then let, that you have that, we'll take Mill Street. Well, Mill Street, guess what, when the new bridge opens up, Mill Street's gonna come back to us. And that'll be on our, on our dime again. And so, I mean, we, we had no way to foresee that back then, right? It's, that's the crystal ball that we don't have, that unfortunately, it'd be nice if we did, but, so.
Vinnie, would you agree with Dave as far as taking a smaller bite on a loan?
I'm gonna say this, two parts, yes, I agree with Dave, but with the one point three something percent financing, you can't spit at that. So it doesn't matter if you take a smaller bite, that percentage rate on that financing, we're not gonna see that again.
Right.
So what I say, go to three million. You can always keep it in the bank account, and you're still gonna save money, because later on it's gonna be two point two, you know, two point six, that difference, percentage's not gonna make a difference. So if you're gonna go get the money, so what if you only use two point five million, as long as it's still in the reserve account? And you're not killing yourself, you're gonna lock in that rate, you can't beat it. And it's unseen.
David, is that your final answer? Do you wanna call a friend?
Call a friend.
I don't have any.
At one point three percent, it's probably a better term than the one that's expiring.
Oh my God, it says, this one here is at three point nine five.
There you go, so they only borrowed, they borrowed one and a half million for three point nine five, okay, how much can you borrow at one point three percent and still have?
Still have the same, same.
Same payment.
Same payment.
Probably at two, two, two point two, two point four. So the same payment.
So what if they do, they do the three million dollar loan, and it doesn't say that we have to hot top everything in two years? What if we spread it out into three years?
Well, yeah, that's, that's what Vinnie's kinda saying, just.
Yeah, so that way it gives us more time to do what we have to do, and if one year says that, you know, the prices were up and it might go down or whatever, let's, maybe we could do that. Spread it out into three years.
Yeah.
Is, is there?
Or, you know, if it works two years, which is fine.
What, what's the legality of, of, oh, you're going to the bond with this, or?
Well, we'll first go to the.
Like, so what's, what's the legality of if the money's sitting in the bank, like there's, you know, and we use half and there's a, you know, and then disaster strikes, can we go back to the taxpayer and say, no, because it's bonded at that point?
So with, with bond, you gotta go through, we, we just kind of talked about this. With the bond bank, you gotta use your monies for the intended purpose.
Okay, that was my question.
First of all, you gotta go with the intended purpose that, that was established at town meeting. And with the bond bank, you gotta use the money for, and that's, it's called arbitrage, and, and so you can't use it for any other reason than what it was borrowed for.
And you can't put it in the bank and make money on it. In other words, you're paying the full payment, even if you don't spend.
Right, I think that there are some times that, depending on the, on the type of borrowing, you, you can earn a little up to a certain amount of interest, but not much. I don't know that number off the top of my head, though.
Well, I mean.
But generally speaking, it's really negligible.
Where could you go anyway to make that much money today? You know?
If you have it, might as well spend it, because you're not, you're, it's costing you money to keep it in the bank.
Well, you're.
Yeah, it is, in essence, it, it would be just because of the, the expenses going up on you.
I mean, you're not supposed to make money off borrowed money.
Right.
That's, that's, that's arbitrage, you know, so.
But the thing is, is that if we do separate it into three years, the last cycle of hot top we do will only be seven years old when the loan matures, so we go back again on the backside.
Right, no, that's playing it smart, and I think that would be the discretion of you to manage that.
Yeah, so you figure that
Yeah.
you're, you're gonna buy yourself three years.
You bet.
Like that.
You bet.
So when you go back a second time around, that it's only seven instead of ten, so your roads are not in poor condition.
I would just say, though, that.
That's another option.
I would just say that, that's, it does work good like that, but you also gotta, you gotta keep an eye on, on the asphalt market too. Because whatever you think you might have in savings, if the cost keeps inching up, and so you probably would wanna, just a thought, potentially, you know, in theory, the more, the bigger the project, the better the price. And so you could probably structure a bid package based on, just give us a price for X amount of tons, give us a price for X amount of tons, give us a price for X amount of tons, to see if there's a big variance, and then the board would have the opportunity to say, well, you know, God, we're gonna save ten bucks a ton here, we go.
Well, yeah, but, but, you know, are they even gonna be able to give you that?
Well, we structure the bid.
I know a community that locked in a price for three years for hot topping.
Oh, really? So it can be done?
They, they never finished it the first two years, so the third year, they honored the first year price, it was locked in at that.
Well, you talk about, okay.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but that's because they were supposed to get it done in one year.
Yeah, but, I mean.
And the contractor couldn't get it done in barely two years.
Oh, oh, so it was a contractor's issue, not that, not that we, not that the time, the size.
But I mean, there's gotta be something, if they've done it like that.
If the contractor has to take that risk, he's going to up his bid to include his risk.
Now, Kevin, if, if, if there is money earmarked specifically for hot topping in the upcoming year and in the second year, can you actually stall other regular work that you normally do and, and increase your time on hot topping to to preserve the existing roads so they don't further deteriorate?
To a certain extent, because like springtime, you gotta do cleanup.
Yeah.
Certain times of year, we gotta do painting. Fall, we gotta prepare for winter, winter sand and stuff like that, so I can do some, but I mean, it's to a certain extent, but I think that our perfect timeframe would be from when the frost comes out of the ground till the end of July. Because nobody's projects have came out yet and everybody's hungry to get to work. Because after the state bids and all the other bids come out, we're dealing with four, five, six, eight million dollar hot top projects, and they're gonna go where the money is.
Well, I think we should put that on our calendar and look to get some, some of that work done.
So that way, if come the end of July, we've met what we need to do. And they're always gonna have a couple days that they can come around, well, I can prepare something in town and say, when you have three days, you're gonna come take care of that street, that street, that street. So it's more that we can do for.
Would that go to bid probably mid-February, could be first on the list?
Yes.
Or even late January?
I would start at the beginning of the year. Because nobody knows what they got for work that time of year, and they would obviously be hungry, they start locking in work for the twenty twenty-one summer.
Please we can drive the new roads for that summer? Wait, please we can drive the new roads that summer?
Yeah. No, wait till September, October.
Yeah, Vinnie, go ahead.
We did a project, we had different projects, we made it go on for a period of ten years. And we had gotten, gotten some low interest money, and some of the monies were designated only for the third year. So we contacted the state to see how much money we could put, interest money we made. So we took out a CD for the third year, so it was minimal, there wasn't like one point five, probably one seventy-five percent I think at the time. But that money that we made in CD, CD offset the price, it increased the hot top money. So it's something you can look at. So it's gonna take a whole bunch, okay, we're not gonna use this third year money, put it in a CD for two years, accumulate a little bit of return.
Mother.
Is.
While money is a bit, while, while money in a CD coming in, there's a certain amount, create that balance.
Um, is there, okay, so, so to kind of work off all this conversation, does this specific list have to follow the warrant? And the reason I'm asking that is, let's, my, my brain goes a hundred miles an hour, and this might be the stupidest question ever, but if we have, if we borrow the three million, and Kevin does half or a third, and then, you know, another third, and that money's sitting there, can that money be used on other roads, like all, like if there's a road not on this list, can that be used there and his two sixty-four or three sixty-four stay in the account? Earning mon- earning interest, if we can't earn interest on this, can, I mean, does it, we're borrowing it for roads, does it have to be this specific list of roads in this project?
Yeah, I didn't make the motion with the list, I just made the motion for the amount.
So what's gonna happen is when, when we take our warrant article, we send it to the bond council, they're gonna, they're gonna wanna see the town meeting warrant as approved, and so whatever, whatever was enabled.
Thank you.
Whatever was enabled, and granted, though, this had some language in it last year, so it was estimations, and, you know, this is subject to change. But the bond bank's gonna take, bond council's gonna look at everything in that warrant, and that's gonna be part of bond council giving their, their opinion to the bond bank that, you know, this is, this is good lending for them, so. You don't have to be this specific, you know, in the warrant article, it could be as simple as, shall the voters approve a three million dollar bond for a paving project for roads and streets in the town of Madawaska?
I, I'm just thinking ahead, 'cause, you know, I got, just got done saying I don't wanna touch his asphalt money ever. But, you know, if, if it alleviates some concern that in two years from now, all of a sudden, the state revenue sharing goes down by three hundred thousand dollars, oh my God, we're gonna bring the mil rate up, I mean, it, can we, is that possible, that we, we would steal that again, or? Not that I want to. I just, I have to see all the angles, I guess.
This really has no bearing on, on, on what we're deciding right now, right?
Well, I, this is a plan.
It's the amount of money that we're, we're choosing to, to work with. It's the amount of money that we're, we're choosing to, to work with.
Consider this, this is somewhat of a planning document. And the board, the previous board wanted to have the people to see what the vision was.
Thank you.
More or less. And so don't have to do that. Um, I think that you, uh, you're working with a budget in mind. It's not necessary that you have all this in the warrant article. Okay? It wasn't, this wasn't necessarily attached to the warrant article underneath it, but it was in the behind, it was behind the warrant. I think it was like the last page in the warrant. It was like a supporting document.
Yeah.
To describe the project, the project estimate and the scope.
Well, of course, I mean, that, that, that probably makes it a little easier for everybody to understand at town meeting what, what they're trying to fund. You know, if you've got this in front of them as opposed to just a dollar amount.
Better, they could put a proposed amount, two million dollars earmarked for the back roads and one million dollars in town. So that way you don't have to, because if you have something in writing, you know as well as I do, somebody's going to say, well, I saw it here and it's not here no more.
Well, I guess that's why I'm questioning it.
Yeah. I'd add the word tentative to the top of it or something to show that it's just a living document.
Because the last time I think we had put just, it was an estimation or a proposed, so it was.
That's what it is too.
Proposed, so.
It's an estimate based on eighty-two dollars.
The poll's subject to change.
Well, and if he does try to spread this out over two or three years, you know that people are going to have seen or, you know, someone will be looking for their road and, and, you know, they're going to want to know why their road wasn't done in the first year.
Mm-hmm. Now, did you, do you, did you write down his, can you repeat it to us? This was a half hour ago. Did you all hear that? Three million, ten years.
Can you say it again louder? I, I didn't hear it.
Jason motions a three million.
Yep.
Term for 10 years and Lori seconded it.
And Lori seconded it. And we, so I don't, do we have any other discussion on this at this point? Then I'm looking for a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Any carries?
Kevin, um, did have a question.
Wow.
We're gonna, I buried that paper here, but in my stack here. He's, he's done some work. Yeah, thank you. Kevin's done some work, uh, on getting the roads shimmed and patched and all that stuff.
I thought I saw somewhere that we had established our next, next regular meeting. Did we not? Did I see that somewhere or did I not see that? Oh, yeah, we want to discuss this too at this point, right?
We want to discuss.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yep, yep.
So Kevin is at a point right now that he's, you know, he's done what he's done. Um, he's got to come back to this board to see, he, he's got more work lined up if, you know, that could still be done this year for as far as shimming and, and preparing roads. Uh, but he wants to come to this board to request, uh, additional funds out of, uh, the road project reserve. That's going to be put forth before the townspeople here in, uh, in a few weeks or so. Uh, so Kevin?
Yeah, I had said the last couple of meetings that when we hit the 150, 200,000 dollar mark, we just talk about what we done and revisit it.
Yep.
To see if we can move forward with a little bit more if we had time and money left. So right now, I, we prepared a paper for you, tells you, uh, what we've done so far, what, what we've taken it out of. Right now, my balance on my, uh, road reserve to date is 228,009 24.38. I would probably save, I'd try to save between a hundred and a hundred twenty thousand dollars in that because I don't want to deplete, deplete that to the end in case something happens, we have a culvert failure or something major, I want to have a cushion to back on. With that being said, I still have half of Guion Road, probably, uh, from the golf course up to Sugar Tree Road up in the Bakers. And then I want to tack Albert Street, try to smooth that out a little bit. So I figure with another hundred thousand dollars, I'd be able to put about 35 to 38 loads of hot top in. And, uh, 20 more, we go on Guion, 10 in the Bakers and five on Albert Street. I just want to, you know, we gotta, I gotta have the okay, just, you know, you guys are all set with that for me to move forward and continue what we're doing. So. And in between that, there's probably 26,000 dollars left in my hot top account. I do not want to touch that because what we're going to do is that I'm going to be going to Soderberg, picking up loads of hot top to try to fix potholes and shim manholes in town. And we're going to do that ourselves at the end of the season. And then there's a section on Guion Road that if Karens has to come in and pave, I don't want to have to come in front of you for a three, four thousand dollar bill out of the road reserve. So I want to keep a cushion for coal patch and next spring for repairs. So I'll have a 26,000 dollar there and then a hundred and, hundreds to 125 in the reserve. So.
So you're asking for a hundred?
Another hundred. But it'd be about 98 and change, but we can say a hundred.
I would make a motion to allow Kevin to use another hundred off of this year's hot top budget.
I'll second that.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing right now and the best we can, so.
Yeah, and you know, this is, this is very informative. I mean, uh, I like this.
Well, I want to make sure that everybody, you know, because sometimes I explain it, they don't understand or this way it's, the numbers are there and where it comes from and where it's going. There's no smoke and mirrors. It's all a straightforward truth.
You're doing a good job, Kevin.
Yep.
Other, other than being a little carsick, I, I enjoyed the tutorial.
If anybody wants to come for a ride with us for whatever reasons, for questions on hot top or roads, give me a call. I'm, I'm up quite a few hours a day or anytime of the week or whatever, we can arrange it.
I inspect them regularly between four and five in the morning.
Can I, uh, can I make a request that we try to move our meetings to five o'clock? Is that an issue for anybody? Can we try to go back to five o'clock as opposed to five thirty?
It's an issue for me.
It's what?
It's an issue for me because we were asked by actual like taxpayers to do it at five thirty because people work till five. What's, like, why?
Well, just because it's getting dark and, and I'm thinking that we're not going to have that many folks here with us when we're going through some of that. But beyond that, it's, it's not more than that. You know, we're, here we are at nine o'clock and we're still, we're still hashing out here after, what, three, two and a half, three hours?
Three hours, seventeen minutes.
Could we not have meetings more often then?
Well, or, or that. I mean, if you want to entertain the idea that we have maybe, I mean, I don't, Gary, I mean, uh, you're seeing what comes up during the course of a month here and, and I mean, if we left that open to you to say, okay, I mean, I've got five or six articles here that, that can take a couple of hours, can we not call a meeting, uh, you know, within a week's time and?
Yeah, I mean, we.
Because this is long here, I mean.
This, this is not normal. We're, we're dealing with trying to get the budget done and, um, making some big decisions here. These are not typical, since I've been here, meetings have not lasted this long.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Does it mean?
Right now, we could probably use a couple of meetings a month. I don't necessarily think that, well, we need to be on that frequency all the time.
Yep.
I, I just, you know, I, I get it. I, if I'm the only one, it's fine, but our bylaws say we should meet twice a month. I don't see why we can't say every other Tuesday, we meet at five thirty and the taxpayer knows that way, not, everybody's not always asking, when's the meeting, when's the meeting? We can schedule, if he come in here and it's only an hour long meeting, well, yay for us. And if we feel like after a few months of doing that, it's too much, then that's fine, but I, and, and, and I'm sorry you're saying this is just this once, but since I've been on this board, this is what it's been. A motion, a motion to longer, a motion longer, a motion longer. And then we have articles that, you know, I, I didn't like your delivery, Dan, I apologize, but he's right, like he has things he wants to discuss. I've had things I've asked if we could discuss and, and they don't get put on the agenda because we're always getting, you know, pushed off. So I, there, that's my piece. I mean, if I'm alone, it's fine, I'm not offended.
I agree. In, 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 uh.
Holy, I'm going to fall under the table.
With, uh, you know, with respect to the taxpayers, I think Lori brings out a great point that if we do have a, a, a set time to have a meeting, then it, it eliminates the idea that we're always getting questioned about what, what day and what time we're having our next meeting. And so for the time being, can we not establish that we would do this every couple of weeks? Maybe every other Tuesday, uh, we're going to keep the same time at five thirty and, and?
Do you guys have anything?
That's fine, we should have.
The same.
As long as it's earlier than five, I'm fine with five, five thirty.
Dan, you're all right with five thirty? We're going to keep the same time.
Yep. That's fine. I don't want to hinder anything, but just, uh, so that, you know, I'm, I'm committed for the next month, uh, I'm out. I get, I'm committed to two moose hunts where I, I'll be away. My bread and butter.
That's why I think, I think the reason why, you know, we've gotten away from regularly scheduled meetings is because over the course of time, the boards have always tried to work with everybody's respective calendars work. This one gets out of work, this one's not around. And so they've worked to not really, not nail themselves down to a calendar date, um, so that we could get the most amount of board members to attend their board meetings. And so when you have it set in stone, doesn't always allow for that to happen.
But he's on a moose hunt.
Pros and cons.
The whole week, like.
Well, we, the week prior scouting, the week of the hunt, then the following week scouting and then a second week.
So we're not going to wait.
So that's really just one month.
A month.
So that's one meeting maybe. If, or, or unless we do go with the two meetings.
I think, I think that right now, uh, we're going to have to have a snap board meeting to probably, maybe a few articles. Um, now that I know what the warrant articles are wholly for the budget, uh, now that I know I got to include an article for the borrowing for the bond, um, you know, I can, I can assemble my draft warrant, uh, I can send that out to you so you guys can review it. And then, you know, if there's, um, you know, typos or if there's issues, you can all shoot me an email and I can address those. And we'll call a meeting to adopt, to basically set the warrant. Because I have to, we have to, uh, at that point, once we have the warrant, we gotta, we gotta send the books off to the printers. We need a couple of weeks to get that turned around and back to us. Needs to be in the taxpayers' hands at a minimum of three days before town meeting. And so a couple of weeks to post the meeting publicly in, in public places before we actually have our town meeting, so.
Do you have a tentative date for a possibility for town meeting?
Somewhere's in the second week of October.
November four.
I don't want to, I don't want to push it off too long because we, you know, after, just to give you a timeline, we do that. Then we, we have to bid again, um, to set the mill rate. So that we can commit, commit and then commit the taxes and set the mill rate. And then, then from there, we gotta send out our, our billing for the tax bills and turn that around. So the longer we wait, the longer it is to get revenue back in the door. We're late, we're late billing this year. And it's not very, it's not ideal for the taxpayers when you get their bill so late and then taxes are due in March. The tax due date doesn't change, it's always March, around March 15. So when you commit normally in June or July or August, they have almost a year, you know, but it shortens the amount of time that they got to pay their bill.
Doug Missam.
So, uh, sooner, sooner the better, uh, for them and then for cash flow. Uh, and then we can move on, get that off our plate.
Um, is the road next to Central Building, the snowmobile trail issue, all of that going to be on the next agenda?
Because. It can be on the next agenda?
Because we have to do something about that before it snows, obviously.
I mean, I have all the information ready for you to act upon. Uh, the only thing that we have to do is if, if we're going to consider alternative areas, roads of access, we ought to let, uh, residents nearby know so they have an opportunity to come talk to the board before the board weighs in on it. And so, um, we can, um, we can do that, you know, once we figure out when the next meeting date, I, I'm going to take a, I'm going to get to work on the warrant there. Probably ninety percent done. Uh, I gotta go back and add this new information in and go over it. And want to get some bond counsel to give me some, uh, potential recommendations for warrant article for this borrowing that, so they're not.
And fire truck.
And the fire truck.
Thank you, Mr. Vinnie, for your seasoned input into our meeting.
I would, uh, I'm motioning to adjourn.
Yep. Well, I was just going to ask for, uh, a meeting, a date for a next meeting. So, so we're attempting to just stick with the month now, is that it? We're going to stick with just a one meeting? One meeting for the next, next month at least?
I think, I think that next week, we'll probably have a meeting to set the town meeting.
That, yeah, well, that, that's a snap meeting anyway, so.
Right, and that would, and that could be, could be anytime, right? If you, and I don't know if you want to have that in the evening or it could be an afternoon thing or whatever. It's still a public meeting, but we could, if it were outside of, if it were during school hours, we would have to do it down at the town office, but it's just that one article potentially. And then a regular board meeting.
Does it make any difference to you if it's at the beginning of the week or the end of the week? See, if, if it's the beginning of the week, I can make it a point to be there, I'll come out, but be on, be on Wednesday. If it's Monday, Tuesday night, I'll come down, but Wednesday on, come out, whatever. But you, you know. I don't need to be there.
I think I can be ready by then. I think.
All right. So, so then let's consider the regular meeting, which would be, uh, another, what, month from now? We're talking, uh?
No, I think it's two now. Probably sooner than that.
Well, what, what date are you considering?
You want to set that right now?
Well, normally we do unless you want to wait.
Hold on. See, because if we, we have a meeting next week, set the warrant. I mean, we could potentially meet on the twenty, on the last week of October, uh, September.
The last week of September?
Twenty, like on the 29th. Or the second week of October, the sixth.
Go to six, I can't, the last week.
We don't want to do anything in the, that third week of October because we're thinking probably town meeting in there. So we don't, we think we want to have.
Can we push it to the sixth?
You want to push it to the sixth?
Sixth of October?
Yeah.
Well, then, then we're talking about the snowmobile trail. If we have to come back on it again, then we're into November, then it's Thanksgiving, and then we're not resolving an issue that's been sitting around for how many months? Like, what, what's wrong with the 29th?